All right, Terry, we're good, right? Recording? Tape's gone. Okay, this is the regularly scheduled Town of Nantucket Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, April 11th. Is it April 11th? No.
No, April 14th.
Fourteenth, April 14th, 2016. Can I get an approval of the agenda as written?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay. All is in favor. Any further discussion? No. All is in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, how about approval of the minutes, March 10th, 2016? I have to admit, I did not read them.
I agree with him.
So, should we shelve that until the next meeting?
I read them.
You read them? You comfortable?
Yep.
Yeah? I'll take your word for it. Okay. So, will you make the motion then?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, the motion is made in second and to approve the minutes as written on March 10th, 2016. Any further discussion? No. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so all business, 0416, Donald J. McKinnon, trustee of Nantucket, 106 Surfside Road Trust, aka Surfside Commons 40B, 106 Surfside Road. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm DJ McKinnon, and I have here with me today Steve Schwartz from Gulston and Stores, Josh Swirling from Bowler Engineering, Arthur Reed, local counsel, and Margaret Murphy, as well as Joe Sheridan from Gulston and Stores as well. Just to kind of update from our last meeting, we were here last January 14th, and since then, we had a site visit on March 29th, where we staked out the buildings, you know, attempted to do, we did float balloons as best we could, but we had high winds, so we did go through that process. And then from our January 14th meeting, our notes indicate that in preparing for the current meeting today, you had asked us to put together schematics of the proposal with cross-sections through the site, which we've done and submitted that. Also asked that we put together some more detail on the waiver requests, which we have done that as well. And then, in addition, asked to put together a legal brief on the sewer, which was done and submitted. There's also been a response to that by town council, and it's gone back and forth a couple of times from a legal standpoint with different positions on the sewer. And then lastly, we were asked to put together the presentation in a PowerPoint format, which we've done, and we have that ready to go today. Within the PowerPoint, we do have the schematics and cross-sections, as well as the detail on the waivers. We did not put anything in the PowerPoint on the sewer, because that seemed to be much more appropriately dealt with in the legal memos that have been submitted to the board. So, if it's okay, we're happy to go ahead and kind of walk through the PowerPoint, if that meets with your pleasure.
Yeah, why don't we do that? We all good with that?
Yeah.
To check out the PowerPoint, and the audience gets a better view of what's going on than the plan, and yeah.
Okay, great. So, I'm gonna try to coordinate with Margaret here. Let's see, first slide that we have, I'm not gonna read this in full detail, but it really just talks about the need for affordable housing in the island, including some of the statistics indicating that we have 4,896 year-round housing units with 121 affordable units, based on the count from DHCD, which puts the island at 2.5% affordable housing. In addition to that, there's about 6,700 seasonal housing units in the island. As most people know, housing is very expensive. The last numbers we had put the median home price at $1,002,000, and the median family income at about $92,000. And according to the Housing Needs Assessment that was done by Housing Nantucket, that results in housing, homeownership being cost prohibitive for 90% of the year-round households. And then, again, with that same report from Housing Nantucket, their recommendation, one of their recommendations among many, was to make better use of Chapter 40B to create affordable housing for working families on the island, which fits precisely with our proposal. And next, we've got, let's see, a couple of aerials. I know most people are very familiar with the site. The site is, I'm gonna write the Senate here, on the aerial, just to the salt of the intersection of Fairgrounds Road and Surfside at 106 Surfside. Whereabout, this is a one-mile ring, which brings us out to Surfside Beach on the southernmost point, and within about a mile, we pick up a good section of the mid-island area with the schools, hospital, retail district, and so forth. And then this other ring that you see at the top is the two-mile loop, which brings us up to Nantucket Harbor and the downtown area. And the next, just a little bit of a zoom in, this is now a one-mile radius from the site, the site being right in this location. You can somewhat see a layout of our buildings on the property. And then, in addition to that, the blue lines that are shown on the roads here indicate the bike paths going throughout the, through the immediate area. Again, schools, mid-island district, Boys and Girls Club up in this area here. Just kind of a summary of the development details, the proposals for 56 apartments with one, two, and three-bedroom units, 42, which is 75%, would be market rate, and 14, the other 25% would be affordable under the state guidelines. Some of the other amenities include the in-unit washer and dryer, air conditioning, we've got storage on-site, and then amenities include a clubhouse, pool, landscaped open space. And then one of the critical elements from a management standpoint is to have an onsite manager. In fact, one of the apartments would be dedicated to that onsite manager who would live there and provide, you know, continual oversight of the development. Next, I'm gonna ask Josh Swirling to come up. We've got a few slides on the site plan, as well as Josh will walk through the cross-sections and the schematics.
Go to the next slide. Next slide. Hi, so, again, Josh Swirling, professional engineer with Bowler Engineering. We prepared the site plans that were filed with this application. And I'll just walk you through briefly the layout. We have four multifamily buildings proposed. I'm losing, maybe I do need that one. So we have four multifamily buildings located on the site. Two of them have 13 units, two of them have 15 units. The proposed driveway is located across from Gladland Zab. There are 92 surface parking spaces proposed along the perimeters of the buildings. There are also eight garage spaces located to the rear of the buildings along the rear here. You can see from this depiction, we're proposing an amenity space inclusive of a pool area, a clubhouse, and there's pretty extensive plantings that are contemplated here by way of both shade trees, street trees, and ornamental trees, as well as shrubs and ground covers throughout the development. Also, we're looking, we're hoping to preserve the existing vegetation out along Surfside, and we'll see that again, I'll speak to that again on the following slide here. So this is the, this is a perspective view, as though we're standing across Surfside, but what's not included in here is the vegetation that exists all along, but for where the driveway is, all along Surfside here. So, and when we'll see on the cross-section as well, we've stepped these, the buildings down at the front, closest to Surfside, and once you add in that 20 or so-foot-tall vegetation that's along Surfside, it's gonna do a lot to soften, soften the appearance of the development from the adjoining roadway and the budding properties. We can go to the next one. So the cross-sections that we provided show, I'll start here, first cross-section was cut through here, that's AA, BB is here, CC, and DD. So as we look at this cross-section, I know it's a little difficult to read from the back of the room here, but I'll point out that in this cross-section, we're starting the slice from out at Surfside, and then going back to the rear here, so it reads from left to right, the way that I just ran the laser pointer. So this is the jog that I was speaking to here, that steps the front of the building down. The highest point is really to the, to the buildings in the back, but again, because of the orientation of the buildings and the site, everything kind of naturally progresses, steps back, and doesn't appear to be as high when you're from the street, particularly when you consider the buffer that exists out along Surfside. And I'll just, if we could go back to site, I'll fill in a couple of more details relative to the design. That's fine. So we've, we've done onsite test pits here, we've, they were witnessed by Ed Pesci. We've provided a drainage report, which was reviewed by Mr. Pesci, as well as the water department. And I'd just like to point out that I think they both agree with the approach and the calculations that we provided. The water company indicated that they were pretty pleased with the fact that we included an operation and maintenance plan within that report as well. We are being very sensitive to the groundwater protection district that this site is located in, and we have, we have designed the stormwater improvements to, to the state standards, and to a point where we believe that the groundwater will be adequately protected. The utilities will run up along Surfside to Fairgrounds for water and sewer. We'll certainly work with the water department and the fire department relative to hydrant locations, spacing, valving, all that, all those details. And we'll also work with the fire department to ensure that they're comfortable with, with fire apparatus circulation throughout the site.
Let's see, we've got a few more slides here I'm gonna walk through, based on questions we've had from people in the past. On the resident profile side, we're looking at likely people to rent in this location, these all being rentals, would be a combination of single people, small families, pet interest from town employees, you know, teachers, firemen, police, et cetera, hospital employees. I'm sure people have seen that, you know, the hospital somewhat regularly now advertises in the Inquirer Mirror, looking for locations for their employees on a regular basis, as well as we find that this is likely to be attractive for certain seniors as well. Next, the projected rents for the market rate units, we're looking at rents that would range between approximately $2,000 a month to up to about $3,500 a month for the larger three-bedroom units. On the affordable side, the rent translates to approximately $1,200 per month, and that's set based on people's income by HUD. With those incomes to qualify for the affordable units, I know when we filed the application, these get adjusted a little bit as time goes on, but it was roughly between $55,000 and $80,000, depending on the, on the family size, for the affordable units. And then the process for choosing the affordable residence starts with having a certified entity, this is someone certified by the state, is hired to actually make the choice on the affordable residence. The apartments are advertised in several locations on Nantucket. People would apply, and they have to fit the income criteria, that all needs to be verified. And then with that, a waiting list is formed with the eligible people, and as apartments become available, the units can then be offered. In addition to that, there is an annual income verification of the residents to make sure that they still fit within the appropriate range to qualify for the affordable apartments. And then lastly, depending on the approach from the town, potentially up to 70% of the apartments can be dedicated to residents with local ties, again, as determined by the selectmen. Then next, actually, I'm gonna grab my list here, and I know this is, this has been submitted in print form as well, we added the detail on the waivers. So on that, let's see, I'm gonna start with this first one, which relates to sewer. We have requested a waiver to be exempt for paying the fees on sewer. That's kind of the first category of 120-1 and 6. The next one is on the erection of an occupational or other sign. There's a restriction under Section 121, 124-1, on the size being limited to 2 feet by 6 inches. We've proposed a sign that's on the plan that's approximately 2 feet by 6 feet. Let's see, next, we have restrictions under 124.7 on the roof line, which establishes in the regulations not to exceed 50 feet. That is this right here. And we've proposed a roof line that would be approximately 150 feet. Next is conditions related to HDC, obtaining a certificate from HDC, and we would seek a waiver from that, because the HDC would be part of the overall comprehensive permit. Next, under 124.9, as opposed to a separate permit for raising the existing home, again, that would be part of the overall comprehensive permit. I will point out on that, we do think there may well be an opportunity to relocate the existing home under one of the coming-in-home programs, and would be willing to take a look at that also. Let's see. Next, under streets and sidewalks, there's a separate permit requirement for doing alterations. We do have utilities and work that we do need to do in the streets, and again, would look at that, for that to be covered under the comprehensive permit, as well as Number 136 under the wetlands for any alterations. We actually don't want to be wetlands on the site, but under the Chapter 136.3, it also covers activities that could be in habitat for rare significant wildlife. We do have utilities coming in from across the street that would cross through that zone, and we'll look for that to be part of the comprehensive permit. Next, under the zoning bylaw, 139.7, there's a restriction on apartment buildings, and obviously, our proposal is for doing multiple apartment buildings on the lot. We then move on to a restriction on use of a trailer or a building-like container for residential purposes. We have proposed on our site the possibility of some form of a trailer for temporary construction workers. They would like the board to consider that. And then we move on to 139.12, which is the public recharge district, and we are looking for a waiver, because we do exceed the 15% of 2,500 square feet of the lot area under that requirement. Let's see, under 139, continuing 16 intensity regulations, we're in two different zones. Almost, most of the lot is in LUG 2. The back roughly 45-foot-wide strip is under LUG 3. So under LUG 2, we do comply with the frontage, we exceed the 150 feet. The maximum ground cover ratio under LUG 2 is 4%, and we would be at approximately 77%, so we're seeking a waiver on that. We exceed the minimum lot size. The front yard setback is 35 feet, and we're seeking a waiver for, reduce that to 10 feet. We do comply with the side yard at 15 feet, and the rear yard at 15 feet. Under LUG 3, which is that back roughly 45-foot strip, we actually don't have frontage in LUG 3, it's in the LUG 2 zone. Ground cover ratio is approximately the same, at 70%. The minimum lot size in LUG 3 bumps up to 120,000 feet, we're at 108,000 feet. Again, the front yard is in the LUG 2 portion of the property. And then under the side yard and rear yard, we don't have any portion of the building in the LUG district, LUG 3 district in either one of those. Originally, we had put, proposed a waiver under 139.16A for intensity. And going back and looking at that further, it looks like we do comply with the intensity calculation, we're at 0.98, so we exceed the 0.55 number. So we've been able to withdraw that one. Under height, there's a height limitation of 30 feet, we're proposing maximum height going up to 55 feet. Under 139.18, parking spaces, under the, under the bylaw, they establish the size at 9 feet by 20 feet. We're okay with the 9 feet, but we're looking to do 18 feet in length, as opposed to the 20. Under 139.19, for parking lot screening, we're proposing, they have a requirement basically for a special permit. Under that, we're looking to do a four-foot privacy vents to essentially meet that, to in place of that requirement. Under the driveway access regulation, as opposed to a separate permit for that, having that be part of the overall comprehensive permit, as well as a site plan review, waiving that, since we're going through the comprehensive permit. Same thing with the occupancy certificate by the HDC, really, all these requirements by the HCC, having them fold under the comprehensive permit. Then moving on to A 301-12, sewer commission, water commission districts, that relates back to the legal memo that we've filed, that we believe the zoning board does have the authority to allow for the sewer extension as part of the overall comprehensive permit. So that kind of walks through our list of waivers, and again, I know that's all been submitted in written form as well. Just a couple more quick slides from a Nantucket standpoint. We've given a few bullet here on the benefits to Nantucket, helping to meet the need for both the market rate as affordable rental housing, as well as by establishing a close-to-the-mid-island businesses, hospitals, schools, providing the housing for year-round workers, and housing for employers to help in continuing to attract in quality employees. And then, you know, in addition to that, obviously, providing additional real estate tax revenue to Nantucket. And then, I guess we have a picture of the site? I think that's it, Margaret. I think that's it for the, for the PowerPoint. I guess I'd, I'd look-
Can I interrupt for one minute?
Sure.
DJ, I forgot at the beginning of the meeting to just state that both Mark and Jim Mullen ruled in, they were at the meeting-
Okay.
-the other day, you know, several months ago.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's, it's best if everybody's up here participating, so-
Sure.
Are you okay with that, Steve?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to get it into the record.
Okay, thank you. And then next, I was gonna talk a little bit about some of the comments, because I know, I know we got a fairly long list from the selectmen on April 7th. We did respond in their specific, excuse me-
Sorry to interrupt, but just according to Mr. Chairman, on the waivers, if the applicants could formally state for the record and perhaps provide a writing that the updated waiver supersedes the earlier waiver request, so that the record is clear on that point.
Works for me.
Gonna look to Steve.
That's fine, we'll do that. I just, one thing on the waivers, because we have not had the opportunity yet to sit down with either the board's counsel or, or the zoning enforcement officer here on the island, but we did keep in the waiver list requirements for special permits or approvals, certificates, whatnot, from other local boards, in a effort to be all-inclusive. Strictly speaking, I, my view is, I'm not really sure waivers are required from those requirements, and typically, what we would do is we would sit down at the appropriate time and reach agreement on which waivers are or are not required. We have not had the opportunity to do that yet, so again, we wanted to make sure we're covering all our bases by including them. So in answer to Alana's question, yes, this is our, we, this is our current waiver list. It's probably not our final waiver list, but it's certainly the waiver list that is of the record now.
And the only reason I make the point is because there are a couple of withdrawals, and so I just wanted to make the point that this is the one that we're working with now. In the event that they updated, they could do the same thing in the future to say that it is an updating, supersedes, and so just so the record's-
Right, but you're not suggesting that just because they withdrew something now, they can't re-ask later?
No, they can re-ask later, but I just want your record to be clear as to what waivers you're doing.
Okay. Works for me.
Okay. Okay, great. Let's see, I was gonna move on to some of the comments. We got a fairly extensive list of comments that came through the selectman's office on April 7th. With that, there was a fair amount of detail on the sewer, which we did respond to in a very, in a very detailed way, and that's gone back and forth a couple of times now. I think on that, I'm, I'm not sure if the board could give us any direct, I'm not asking for it at this moment, but if they could give us some direction as to their thoughts, because that's obviously a key element to this at this point in time, and I think we've presented our case, and I know the town council has, has presented her case as well, to get some sense as to what the, the board's thoughts are on that matter would be helpful. You know, some of the other comments that came in, they were from, you know, police, fire, some of the other groups in town, we've responded in somewhat of a general way. They came in, you know, at a point in time where it's tough to give us a full response, but also, seems like when I was starting, it crossed a number of different categories with comments that are coming in from different places, and we have some comments that we're still waiting for, you know, like planning board, HDC, CONCOM, we haven't seen. I think what our hope was, is as we have kind of the full set of comments in, to then break them down into categories. We may have two or three different town departments commenting, you know, in a specific category, you know, maybe the same comments, maybe they're slightly different, we're not sure until we see them all, but it would allow us to provide a more concise response to each one of those categories, knowing that we have the comments in from the various town boards. So we've kind of responded more in a general way. I can walk through those today if we'd like, but I just wanted to raise that we, without having them all, it's, it's hard to provide a concise response. There is one that I did want to bring up that, that I thought was interesting, it actually came from town staff, and it does impact a few of the other comments that are out there, and it would be helpful if we had at least some sense or direction, again, if it could be today, that'd be great, if not, whenever it's available. And that was a comment that we should take a look at, installing a bike path/side walk on our side of Surfside Road, running from our entrance back to the intersection of Fairgrounds and Surfside Road to connect to the Fairgrounds bike paths. It was kind of an interesting comment, because it does then connect to some of the other items that have come up, particularly on the public safety side, as well as access for, for kids and bikes to recreational opportunities and other activities. I think it's something that we thought had some interest, may make a lot of sense to pursue, looking at it, and may actually help to address some of those other concerns, but would like to get some sense, I think, from the board as to whether or not, you know, that item in particular is something that we ought to be pursuing and looking at a little bit more carefully. So, so with that, I'm not sure, you know, where we, where the chairman would like to go at this point in time. We're happy to either get into the detail of some of those comments, or answer other questions.
Well, my thought, and the board can help me out here, was to begin to go through the separate comments that we do have. I agree, we do not have all of them, but at some point, we have to start with what we have. So, my thought was to begin to go through the local concerns that some of the various agencies and boards have come up with. I think, you know, needless to say, many of them relate to the design of the, of what you've asked for, so we'll just start going through. With regard to the sewer, I'm not looking to make any sort of judgment on the sewer at this point, you know, as to whether or not we have the jurisdiction. I don't frankly feel qualified to make that determination. I mean, I guess if nothing else, when, when someone cites case law, it's difficult for me certainly to, you know, we get, we get the citation and then one little paragraph out of it, and it's certainly, certainly hard for me to make much sense of that. It's not what I do on a daily basis, thankfully. So I'm not ready to do anything on the sewer, or give you any guidance on the sewer, at this point. Steve, did you want to respond to that point?
Oh, sorry. Certainly appreciate what you said, Mr. Chairman, and I know there's been a lot of memos going back and forth on this issue. The reason that I think, and that we're requesting respectfully that you consider it, if not today, then, you know, sooner rather than later, is because it is a threshold issue for us in terms- issue for us in terms of the viability of the project. So under normal circumstances, we'd be, you know, on the design issues, which I know the board is eager to discuss, there'd be discussion, give and take on, on design issues and the appropriateness of the design. But frankly, and just being very honest about it, if the board were to condition this, assuming it approves it with a condition that requires us to go to town meeting to extend the sewer district, that condition is basically saying this project is subject to a referendum in front of town meeting, and a requirement of approval by town meeting to allow this project to go forward, essentially. And for us, that doesn't leave us much room in terms of discussion on a number of the other issues which the board may be interested in, because at that point, we feel like we would be negotiating against ourselves, because if that were a condition that were imposed by the board, we would inevitably be before the Housing Appeals Committee on the entire project. So I hear what you're saying, and, you know, that's your judgment to make, it's your prerogative, but that's sort of what we're thinking our mindset is.
Fair enough.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
What about just getting a summary from the two legal counsels? Just we've had...
Well, we've gotten that. We've gotten that.
Not here, right.
And we either, I mean, I still, I personally, you know, again, I'll defer to the rest of the board, I personally don't feel comfortable making that determination at this point. I mean, I, but how's everybody else feel about it? So if you're saying that by virtue of us not making a determination, you're not interested in listening to the rest of our concerns?
No, no. Well, what I'm, I'm just trying to be honest and respectful of people's time. We will certainly listen. In fact, you know, DJ will tell you, we hope to be able to bring our architect at the next hearing. We will make that presentation, we will listen to the concerns, but I am also being honest in terms of, you know, give and take on, you know, design issues, you know, the massing, the density, all of those issues. There probably is not that, you know, where to go with that based on where the sewer issue comes out.
Well, I hear you. I still don't feel comfortable personally making the determination on, as to which legal opinion is correct, and I don't know how we ever get to that point.
Well, let me, and I'll allow Ms. Schwartz to either agree with what I'm about to say or not. In the decision, I think that's, that is a decision you're going to have to make. Even if you're, if you're silent on this issue, it's our position that the comprehensive permit acts as the necessary approval to extend the sewer. So the choice that I think is before you is, you can either be silent, in which case I believe that you're actually agreeing with our position, or you can impose a condition that requires us to go to town meeting to get approval for the, for the extension of the sewer district. Or you can deny the project on, on other grounds as well, I suppose. But that's sort of a decision that's before you. I totally understand that that may not be something you're comfortable or prepared to discuss at the moment, but it is ultimately a decision that you do need to make.
I agree with that, ultimately.
How do we ultimately get to that decision? I mean, what's the path that, that, how do we get help in understanding?
Well, we could, I suppose, have a, you know, some sort of legal discussion between the two sides and...
Yeah, that was my suggestion, not so we make a decision, but we just, I know we have what's been written, and I've read it, but I'd like to hear what the two sides...
We can certainly go that route. Yeah. Let me just go to the audience for one moment, because there are people who I assume want to speak about this issue.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joseph Gay, representing the two immediate of others, Davis at 108 Surfside and Farrell at 104 Surfside. And I did want to address this issue, and I'm glad this issue came up. To the extent I can agree with what's being represented by applicant's counsel, this is a, this is a threshold issue that needs to be decided upon, because the viability of the entire project is based upon this issue. It's undisputed that this property is outside of the sewer district. You have in front of you an opinion by applicant's counsel saying that you have the authority to extend the sewer district. You have an opinion by town council, which I think should govern this board, that the, you as, acting as the sewer commission, do not have the authority to extend the sewer district to accommodate this project. With that in mind, I can see you're struggling already with what do we do with this now that we have essentially what they call an actual controversy that's before this board? It seems silly to go through the exercise of hearing after hearing on various aspects of this proposal that's before this board without making that determination as to whether or not this project is a viable project at this location. So having said that, there is an avenue for this board to get guidance, and that guidance through the court system. And that's by way of a declaratory relief through the court system. And my suggestion, if this board would consider it, would be to simply stay the proceedings, have a complaint filed by town council before the Nantucket Superior Court, get a determination by that court as to this controversy that exists. That, under Mass General Law's 231A, it's specifically designed to accommodate these types of controversies even before a breach or violation occurs. And I think it would be appropriate for this board to have that guidance as to whether or not they can even proceed with this matter at this location. So my recommendation is that this board stay the proceedings, that this matter of controversy be put before the appropriate forum, which is Nantucket Superior Court or the land court is the appropriate forum. Have a determination as to whether or not the legislative action is required, and it would be through town meeting relative to extending this sewer district before this board proceeds with the minutia of this application in front of this board. And so I'd suggest that the board take that into consideration and consult with town council. I'm persuaded by town council's position on this matter, and for that reason, town council's decision should be respected by this board before proceeding further.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Can I just listen to one more audience member? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Barbara Huggins, Huggins &amp; Witten, Nantucket Land Council. I would just like to propose an alternative...
Can you?
You have to speak up a little bit.
Oh, sorry, I thought I was...
Yeah.
Pull it toward you.
Okay.
That better, Terry?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair... Oh, yes, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Barbara Huggins, Huggins &amp; Witten, representing the Nantucket Land Council. I would like to suggest perhaps an alternative to, you know, seeking a declaratory judgment, which is that the board listen to the advice of town council. My firm does a lot of work, both for municipalities and 40Bs. We've represented private parties on these matters as well. There was a recent decision by the Housing Appeals Committee upholding the Newton Zoning Board of Appeals, which found, based on the advice of council, that it did not, contrary to the developers' assertions, have the right to waive a deed restriction limiting the, the project site to non-residential use. And I think there's a lot of similarities between that case and this case, and again, we would urge the board to listen to counsel, whose opinion I think is quite well reasoned. Thank you.
Thank you. Town council, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alana Quark from Copeland &amp; Page Town Council. A suggestion has been made that the board perhaps stay this proceeding and seek advice from the, from the courts under 230, chapter 231A. However, there is no such mechanism pursuant to which the board can stay this proceeding. That's just not the case. There is no mechanism for that. Certainly, you know, in my opinion, what you need to do is to go forward and render a decision. We've heard from the applicant today that they would like a threshold determination or some kind of guidance with regard to the sewer issue from the ZBA. However, in my opinion, you need to go forward, look to see what all of the elements would be for your determination on their application for a comprehensive permit, which involves a myriad of issues, including the sewer and the sewer aspect having two parts to it, one being the authority, of course, but the other part being the actual physical details with respect to the sewer. And unless the applicant is signaling that in the event that the board were to say that it had a determination in a preliminary way now, that it believes that it does not have the authority without town meeting approval under the special act, under the special sewer act, to, to grant the sewer extension without that town meeting approval, that the applicant intends to withdraw in some fashion. If that's not the case, then I think that the board should move forward and consider the response to the application in its totality.
Thank you.
Let me just, let me just be, I'm sorry.
One second. Go ahead.
I'll let Mr. Schwartz speak, and then if the town's consultant, if the board's consultant has anything to add in terms of, like, historical data, I'd be interested in hearing it.
Thank you. Let me just be very clear about what it is that I'm saying. We have every intention and desire to proceed through the hearing and to present information and to respond to the board's questions as we would in any other hearing and do that through the, to completion. And to present all of the technical data that the board's consultants may request, and to do all of those things as we would in any other 40B hearing. So I'm not suggesting anything other than that. What I am suggesting is a practical matter, in terms of the willing, the give and take that sometimes occurs on issues of concern when you have a controversial 40B project, that there would be on our side less room to engage in that give and take in light of uncertainty on where we stand on the sewer issue. That's all I'm saying. Not that we intend to withdraw, or that we are not intending to provide all of the information that the board is entitled to see, to show our compliance with all applicable standards and regulations.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I thank Attorney Schwartz for that clarification. That's very important, and I certainly appreciate his position. What I would say is that certainly as the board and the developer and the public go forward and look at the total response that the ZBA is ultimately going to make to this application, that when there is a give and take, the developers certainly can indicate this is what they can do under this circumstance versus this is what they can do under the other circumstances to whether there is or there is not authority by the ZBA to grant the relief that they're asking for. So that can certainly be part of the give and take, and they can delineate how they would proceed and what they're offering.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, then we'll get to your question, Mike. Go ahead, please.
Good afternoon. Peter Fenn, also for the land council. If I understand the applicant, what they just said was, if you're going to refuse to grant us a sewer permit, saying you don't have the authority to do it and it must go to town meeting, we're not going to engage in the give and take that might otherwise result in a project that you as a board or the town or others might be happier with, for example, lowering density or height. I don't think you should take that into consideration. I think you should analyze this project as you would any other. I think town council's position on the sewer extension is cogent and well reasoned. This board cannot sit as a legislative body. The sewer extension is not a permit, it's a legislative act. It should be off the table, and you should decide that however you decide it, and otherwise you should consider this project as you would consider every other project. And then if you make a determination based on your council's advice and your own determination that you don't have the authority and you're conditioning this permit if you decide to grant it based on a sewer extension by town meeting, then you should do that. And if you determine you have the authority to give it as a permit, you should do that too. But you should consider the entire project as you normally would, normal give and take, however you would condition it, however you would approve it. You should go through the groundwater, you should go through the recharge, you should go through the density, you should go through the amenities, you should look at whether it meets public safety considerations, environmental considerations, everything else you would normally do on a 40B. The normal negotiation you do in a 40B. Maybe you want to say to the developer, "Look, we don't like the height." Maybe we want to say we want more setbacks or more open space for kids. And if you do that, we would consider approving the project subject to whatever other conditions you would impose. And in this case, I would suggest that the condition should be, and in fact, under the law must be, that whatever you do other than an outright denial on other grounds must be conditioned on town meeting approval of sewer extension as your council has opined. I don't see how that's a permit. That's a legislative grant and not to you. It's to the town of Nantucket and its citizens as to whether they want to extend that. Other than that, you should consider the project in the ordinary course with your peer review, your consultants, and whatever normal give and take, and not be subject to a threat from the developer that if you don't give us the sewer, we're not going to do business with you.
Okay. Thank you. Ed, do you have anything to add to this discussion?
Ed Marchand, chapter 40B advisor to the board. I'm not a lawyer. I'd say that's the good news. But I've worked on a lot of 40Bs. It is not unusual for an applicant to come in with a very aggressive proposal. I think the town has responded with a number of comments, the chair is trying to address those. And I think the normal course events, we have two legal opinions. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not comfortable making a determination. I think that the natural inclination would be for a board to agree with its town council. However, there are always risks involved. There is no sort of slam dunk, knowing that the courts are going to support one decision versus another decision. So what normally happens on 40Bs, there's a negotiation, and that often influences the outcome on an issue such as the sewer. And I think the way to do this is to do exactly what the chairman had suggested, define the issues, and I think the comments to date have defined a number of issues, go through them one by one, and see what kind of flexibility the developer has to address those issues.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience wants to speak about this one? Okay. So, again, my inclination is to do the nitty-gritty, go through point by point, and see where it takes us. And if we somehow see the light one way or the other on the sewer throughout, so be it. If not, we'll just add that into the discussion at some future point.
I agree.
Are you okay with that?
I think we have to start the process.
Yeah. Just a question for Mr. Schwartz. It's not unusual for Nantucket to have a special town meeting in the fall.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
It's not unusual for Nantucket to have a special town meeting in the fall. How would you feel about that?
As far as, what's the specific suggestion?
Rather than waiting till next April, if, if we decide that it needs to go to the town meeting.
Well, I obviously wanted to talk about it with the client, but my initial inclination is not very positive on that suggestion, because our view is that there's no need for that.
Okay. So having said all that, doesn't sound like we're going to get to the bottom of the sewer thing today. So my thought was to begin to, as I said, get into the local concerns that various boards and entities have, have stated. Ed Pesci, I know, has to go do some inspections, so I thought we'd start with Ed and go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Ed Pesci of Pesci Engineering, the engineering consultant for the zoning board. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in January, we did a review of the plans that were before us. As Mr. McKinnon has already mentioned, and Josh has mentioned, they've done some field work since then. And there's, in my opinion, the plans were fairly complete when it came to the drainage analysis, but in every other way, it wasn't 100% complete. And there were a number of things that I mentioned in my letter, and I guess I wanted to just mention to the applicant and to perhaps Josh from Bowler Engineering to just ask what they think they were doing time-wise, schedule-wise, to respond to these comments and provide revised plans. And perhaps that's linked to what we just talked about, I don't know, but I wanted to ask when we could expect to see something back with some revisions and additions. There's a number of plans that need to be provided, and I thought they were reasonable requests.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi again. Josh Swirling with Bowler Engineering. So, yes, I think you hit the nail on the head with, I think that it, we're trying to take a tally on all comments so that we can do one comprehensive revision. The items that, that you had noted in, in the letter, we're asking for some additional details of drainage structures, a clarification... for some additional details of drainage structures, a clarification, I believe, on the labeling of a drainage structure, adding a stop bar, stop sign, all things that we can incorporate into a final set of plans relatively easily. But we're trying to gather all comments and address as many of those as we can at once.
Okay. So it sounds like we're going to be waiting for a little bit longer period before we see anything.
Yes, and with regard to some of the more technical things like the stormwater and this, that, and the other thing, again, I don't think we're qualified to make those peer reviews. So we're going to be relying on you and other peer reviewers to take care of that in large measure. I assume the applicant is okay with that? That's okay. We're just going to ask you basically, ultimately, to work directly with the engineers and whatnot on the minutia of the actual drainage, this, that, and the other thing, that we're not really qualified to make determinations.
No, I agree. We're happy to, we're happy to do that because, you know, we see that they're pretty standard, state standards for compliance on all those matters that we fully expect to comply with.
Thank you.
In regard to that, engineering certainly is important, but there's also a critical path nature in terms of the comments that have been raised. Doesn't make any sense to do detailed engineering plans if there are bigger issues that will ultimately influence that. So as you go through these issues today, I think you say, here's number one, and set up a logical sequence in addressing these issues.
Okay. I think, I agree with you. Yeah, there's a lot of linkage here. There's no point in asking the applicant for new plans until we determine what the project may or may not look like. So I'm okay with the engineering and whatnot up to date. I think it seemingly boils down to design, and unfortunately, we don't have HDC comments at this, this point, but we can probably proceed to some degree on, on that issue. One thing I thought I might do is, as, because it relates to design in some regard, is to listen to a representative from the fire department who had fairly specific concerns about safety and start, start the discussion in terms of the, the scope of the project in that way. So.
Did you provide the applicant with all of their original notes?
Just identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Robert Bates, Nantucket Fire. We had come up with quite a list of problems that we found with the site. One of the main ones is access. The landscape plan doesn't work for us. There's a lot of things that don't work in the plan in general. That was like three, four months ago. We've heard nothing back from them. So I believe they've been provided with all of our concerns.
They've been provided with them through the board's selection letter, but I can send them on to them.
Okay.
As they were given to you. I was instructed not to give them directly until I had the board's selection letter.
Okay. So.
Which we do now, so I will send them on to you today.
Okay.
Well, yeah, do you want us to talk about them anyway without?
I don't have my original list.
I have.
Okay.
I have it also.
If it's in the board's selection list, it's incorporated.
Yeah.
One of my comments was to have you comment. The original letter was an email that I could have sworn I had a copy of, but.
Didn't, if I may.
Go ahead.
The, one of the initials was propane storage, above ground or below ground. If it's underground tanks, there can be no parking in the area. Above, above-ground tanks need to be protected. There was no plan for that provided, so it's hard to make a determination as to whether or not it's going to be allowed in that manner. The driveway, the single-access off a surfside road, does not work for the fire department. The, the way the paths go through the building, through the parking lot, a lot of those curves are going to be very difficult. Can we, is it possible to bring up the site plan?
I have a copy of it.
Each of those turns, as you look at, as you're coming off a surfside road, if you make the first turn to the right, you've got the shade trees on the left and then on the, again, on the right. The size of those trees, the islands that protrude out with the parking, our apparatus is not designed to make a 90-degree turn like that. We need space for those turns. The single entrance egress doesn't work. In the event of an emergency, if we start using apparatus in there, we're not going to be able to get more than one or two trucks into that facility. What was, I talked with, with, I believe it was Nathan, was putting a second means of, an egress point off to the left-hand side and having that come out on the surfside road. Exactly. That was what was talked about. I haven't heard anything back from anybody in regards to that. Questioned is the length of the parking spaces because, again, it involves apparatus access. If you've got a Chevy Suburban, which is 20, let's see, 18.7 feet versus a Ford Excursion, which is seven feet, that's going to depend on how we can access the properties. Again, the landscaping plan, all of those shade trees will impede our access to the buildings and also our ability to get around the parking lots. Under the NFPA, we have control over a lot of these things anyway under NFPA's chapter 18, NFPA 1. The initial water supply showed one hydrant for the whole facility. That doesn't work for us. We're going to need multiple hydrants within the grounds. We have, when it comes to building access, the clubhouse, we have no fire department access. We can't get a fire truck anywhere near that building. Left-hand units, left-hand, the 13-unit building, which is the first building on the left, access to two sides of the property only. We have no aerial, if we were to have a problem, there's no aerial access for, we will be ground ladders only, which is manpower-intensive. Right-hand unit, as you're coming in, same day deal. We only have access to two sides of the building. The left-hand, or the two rear buildings, because of the parking on two sides and the proximity to the other buildings, we have limited access there also. And again, at this point, we have had, seen no plans for any of these buildings, so we have no idea what the intention is for fire alarms, sprinklers, and any of that stuff. So it's very hard for us to approve any of what is being presented before us.
Yeah, we're not asking for approval at this point.
Right.
We're just trying to get the issues out on the table. So in essence, what you're saying, if I'm hearing you correctly, is that the schematic plan, such as it is now, makes firefighting, for lack of a better word, difficult.
Makes access for fire apparatus and the safe, there's a safety concern for the residents because of limited access to the property.
Okay. Thank you. Would, you want to respond to that one?
Yes, yes. We'd be more than happy to meet with the fire department and discuss how things can be refined to, to address any concerns that they may have. So if there's a specific individual, if it's yourself, we'd reach out to you and we'd walk through these items and make sure we're on the same page.
Okay. Again, it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg thing without, without, you know, a final or a more final plan. It's difficult to get into every detail. But it seems that the initial blush in terms of the fire apparatus and whatnot and local, the safety issues, this plan does not seemingly jive with the fire department's interpretation. Go ahead.
Along with what Mr. Bates was discussing, I noticed when I was at that site inspection that the busiest corner in the project is where the playground is. And if you have cars going in two directions, coming in and out, and then cars backing up south of the playground, if there was an accident, a vehicle could clearly end up in that parking lot. So.
You mean in the playground?
Playground, yeah. Excuse me. So I know you don't have dimension plans now, but at some point in the future, it would be nice to see the dimensions on that road, that access, the parking, distance from the playground, and any way that we could improve the safety of that.
Okay. I don't know how else to say this, but there seems to be sort of a, you know, the large pink elephant in the room. And the pink elephant is the design and the size of the project as it relates to health and safety of the residents, as it relates to the architectural intensity, how it relates to what Nantucket as a community has tried to do for the past, I don't know, 30, the whole time I've been here, 38 years, in terms of architectural sensitivity to, I guess, to the island. So at some point, we've got to get to that. And I think a lot of the local concerns relate to that, the police department specifically. Does anybody hear from the police department? No. So I'll paraphrase, even though I don't have it in front of me. There were concerns about anything, this, any project this size, and whether or not there was consideration in the, of health and safety of the residents more than anything else of that particular community. So it seems to me that we're going to get to the architectural part of this and the schematic design of it as it relates to local concerns. Go ahead.
Yeah. In response to that, one of the suggestions, one of the things I was going to try to propose is we would like to get, obviously, comments from the HDC because I know they play a big part in the architectural side. But our thought was to have our architect present at the next meeting in May. If we could get those comments, you know, sooner so we have time to review them, that would be better. And then have the architect actually walk through the process that they went through to be able to, you know, come up with the design that we have, the, you know, the concept behind it, the massing of the buildings, you know, the, the nature of the exterior compared to other features that they, that they viewed in Nantucket. So we look forward to having the architect come and make that presentation. I guess whatever information we could have ahead of time would be helpful so that we could respond to it as part of the presentation as well. And at the same time, as it relates to fire and safety and getting, you know, fire trucks and having the appropriate apparatus get onto the site, you know, we completely agree that that needs to be done. And I think both of those working at the same time will help us, you know, look at the overall massing as well as placement of the buildings so that we can do this in a safe and appropriate way.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I'm okay with postponing the architectural discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind through you. The HDC comments have been drafted and they were ready to be signed, but there's been a very recent shift in HDC members. But I should have those signed and ready for you within, at the latest, early next week, possibly sooner.
Great.
And the planning board comments are going to be drafted and signed before the next meeting, but I can attempt to see if I can get you a draft before they're signed by the chairman of the planning boards.
I mean, that's fine with me. I don't, I, you know, I will bring up, bring it up again. And the other avenue is to go to the HDC, volunteer to go to the HDC. And then it, they're the ones who deal with this on a weekly basis.
I think what I'd like to do is actually get the comments so that we can evaluate them and then decide from there. I mean, I, our, clearly, our preference is to have the hearings in front of this board who makes the decision, but let's start with that.
Yeah.
I think we can handle it too, but I'm just suggesting.
But I was going to make one thing. I mean, I feel that I don't really want to talk about the architecture specifically until they deal with some of the, the points that the fire chief brought up in terms of the, their ability to fight a fire and the way that the site plan is done. There's no point in talking about the architecture if the site plan has to be changed to allow more vehicle accessibility. I think it's a waste of time. I think the most important thing is to get a viable site plan schematic that addresses all of the police concerns, the safety concerns that the fire chief brought up, and then, you know, see where that leads the architecture.
So you're saying even if this, even if these were four, one-story buildings, it would still be problematic?
It would still be a problem.
Right. I agree with you.
With vehicular access.
I agree.
So it seems silly to talk about the buildings until those items are met.
Yeah.
Or, you know, or.
I agree. We need to have a base to build on.
I think the, you know, the flip side of that is that, again, the chicken and an egg thing, if, if the buildings are getting smaller from whatever, for whatever reason through architectural discussion, then those problems begin to get better too, possibly.
Well, if they're not as tall.
Right.
If they're shorter. But I think that's one of the things I was going to say. If they have to make the aisle width wider, they have to make their parking deeper. One of the things that I've noticed is there's absolutely no screening, there's very little screening that's shown on this site. I mean, they were aligned on a four-foot board fence for the screening.
Yeah.
As opposed to vegetation. That's going to bring everything in, which I think will change the architecture. So it seems like I would rather talk about the site plan and talk about that rather than the density.
Yeah, I'm not talking about density at this point.
Excuse me, rather than the, sorry. Rather than talking about the site plan, not necessarily density, but, and not really focus on the architecture, although I think it's clear that we have concerns with the height, the heights of the structures, the length of the structures. But it seems like the safety concerns should be brought to the forefront first and dealt with, and then we can talk about architecture.
I think the Lisa's proposal makes a lot of sense.
Ed.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, so in hearing the comments and seeing the comments from fire, I don't envision there needing to be significant changes to the site plan. We've run an SU 30 truck through the site. You know, if there's, if there's concerns with the branch overhang of some of our street trees, those can be adjusted in location. If there's concerns with this radius right here, that could potentially be addressed by the elimination of one parking space. I don't envision there being significant changes to the site necessary to address those, those concerns that I've heard. I envision those being relatively minor, and therefore, in my opinion, you could proceed in hearing the entire discussion relative to design. Because, you know, we, we've done a number of projects. Right now, we have 24-foot aisles with 18-foot-long spaces. We've been involved in other projects on the island where the 20-foot stalls were provided, but only a 20-foot aisle exists. So there's, I mean, there's room within the design to accommodate some maneuvering of parking space size versus drive aisle, potentially, you know, shaving off a little bit of the landscaping to address the aisle and parking space dimension comments. And again, softening some of the radiuses really wouldn't have a big impact on the site to address the comments from fire. And what we're going to do is we'll ask fire for their exact dimensions of their ladder truck or whichever truck it is that they want us to simulate, and we'll run the truck through the site to show how it works. And we'll further evaluate whether or not there can be a second means of egress here, potentially just fire access. I don't, I don't envision it being a big change in the plan to address those comments.
Okay. Thank you. We'll, I guess we'll wait to get some updated site plan in terms of, and then ultimately read comments from the fire chief. The police chief had comments also about recreation, speaking just about the site plan. His comments were about the recreation space being inadequate for that number of people and having a pool, which sounds great, but it's only there, it's really only in use on Nantucket for maybe three months a year. It's a lot of space. So maybe some, some thought could be given to getting rid of the clubhouse, which would possibly help with fire safety and/or getting rid of the pool. These are other things. I think you've seen these comments.
Yep. No, we have. And, you know, we saw them somewhat recently. We are evaluating those and understand those. I, I did want to comment. I do think that looking at the design at this point, because I do think it does relate to size and massing and some of these other elements, I, I think it would be helpful to make that presentation from the architect, get the feedback.
Yeah.
See what the HDC is saying, and that we can look at that in parallel with the comments from police and fire and see where we go from there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to postpone that portion of the discussion until, until, until that, basically.
Right, until we have. Right, till we have the HDC comments.
I mean, I think we can fairly well predict what the commentary will be. So, if you want to take the next month, maybe instead of, well, maybe instead of just presenting what you've presented so far, as to maybe coming up with a few alternatives, that that might save some time. That's just, that's just my guess, though, as to their comments. And/or, I don't think the HDC comments are the governing issue here. I mean, we have to be happy with it. Having said that, I'm not sure that they're, again, until we really get into the design and whatnot, I'm not sure what else we need to discuss at this point. I mean, unless we wanted to give guidance on the design, or unless I was, didn't do a good enough job doing that just then. What do we think?
If I could just break, one item, I know I brought it up earlier, if there wasn't even just initial thoughts, because we could be looking at it in parallel, is the idea shown in this plan of running a bike path on this side, a surfside road, from the entrance of the site back to Fairgrounds Road. If that's something that we should be...
I would think it's a given. I mean, you talk about recreational opportunities for all the little kitties living in there. They've got to cross Surfside Road to get to the bike path. I mean, that's just, I can't even imagine that that meets any standard of safety. It's, there's already a crosswalk down at the, to cross in the middle of Surfside Road made no sense to me. So, I think the path to another path, to a crosswalk, is, would be a given.
Okay. Great.
I also don't necessarily buy into the notion that was put forth earlier, that this buffer area creates enough of a buffer. It's not property under your control. The town could go in there for whatever reason and wipe every one of those trees out.
Well, clarify, if you're going to put a bike path...
And if you're going to put a bike path there, that's all gone. So, I think some real consideration needs to be made. You don't have enough room, 15 feet, even plant a tree. So, I mean, I think you need to consider your design on your property, not utilizing any of the townland as buffer. Because, again, the trees could die, they could never, they could be wiped out.
And that was my point to the screening around the perimeter of the property, too. It looks like it's all relying, it's showing the, a lot of the greenery is actually on other property. You do have your trees, the three trees, and I know some trees here that are planted on your property, but I think it would be nice if there was maybe some vegetation that you controlled beyond, on the inside of your property line.
Okay.
To help, you know, because to, at this point, I know that, you know, it's required a lot for HGC for pool fencing. They don't want your pool fence right up to the property line, because if your neighbor clearcuts his property, then the fence is visible. It's the same sort of concept here, that you should control some screening more on your property.
Yeah. I guess I don't know where else to go, other than get into the aesthetics and the overall design of the project and the details. And I think that a lot of it has to do with the scope of the project, as it's drawn right now. You can't provide, seemingly, maybe you can, maybe you can't, but there are fire safety issues, there's screening issues, you just haven't given yourself enough wiggle room. I'm not sure, are there enough legal parking spaces as drawn now? No.
I don't think so, right? You're short...
100.
Short by eight, right?
I mean, I think at a minimum, you have to provide what is required, and, because the reality is, in today's world, even people that are renting have cars, and they have friends, and they probably have two cars per family. And if it's my family, they have more, unfortunately. So, I think that the scope of the project is just a little, you know, it's too much for that site, given the local concerns and the safety issues. So, I would hope that maybe in the next month, there would be some thought as to mitigating that, rather than just coming here in May and showing us how the architect got to where he got. But that's up to you. It's just time. What else did I have? I don't, I think that's, you know, there were other comments about trash removal and whatnot, but I mean, that is, that's really getting into the...
Getting into the minutia.
...minutia at the end of the, at the end of the process. And, again, I would hope, and maybe I'm, I'm just being over optimistic, that, you know, we can get to somewhere where, with a design and a scope of project, it's a lot more sensitive to the, to where it's being built. So, have any other comments? Go ahead.
And Eleanor, can you answer this, about the time of the next meeting?
I have moved it to 11:00 AM on May 12th in this room.
Thank you.
In terms of, does anybody in the audience want to speak to this?
Thursday. Thursday. I've got to check, I'm not yet allowed to leave.
Yeah, I got it. Go ahead.
It would be better if we could get...
All right, let's hold on to that for one second, on to the next meeting.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I didn't get up quick enough before you moved on from the stormwater, so I just wanted to add one little comment. Cormac Collier, Nantucket Land Council, I understand the need, and probably for efficiency, that you want the town consultant to work directly with the applicant's consultant on the stormwater, and the engineering, and all the other matters as it relates to that. As you know, the land council is very interested in the Wellhead Recharge District. We helped write the regulations. The significant waivers that they're asking really puts up some red flags for us. With the development of this size, we do provide also a consultant's review, which we are working on right now. So, we'll be providing some comments from our consultant and our engineer that we hopefully will be considered as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. I will say that, you know, it may be premature, just because the design and whatnot may change, but that's up to you. But we'll definitely give you an opportunity to take a look at them. I wasn't trying to kick the can down the road, I just don't know stormwater details. So, hopefully, somebody who does would take a look, and then you would certainly get a chance to comment on the final product, not the final product, but whatever's presented to us. So, I guess, is there anything else on this one? Are we just going to, we'll wait till May to get into the nitty-gritty, I guess? I mean, I don't even think it's the nitty-gritty yet. We're not talking about the nitty-gritty. We're talking about the big picture. And the big picture, at least for May, given the health, safety, and other local concern issues, just doesn't, it's not very sensitive to the community, period. And I think you could do a much better job, frankly. So, and I'm hopeful. So, that's it for May. So, should we...
Well, should we talk about the date?
Okay, now we're going to talk about the date.
I have a flight leaving Boston at 2:30.
On Thursday?
On Thursday. So...
Is it private? Can I pick you up here?
No, it's not private, unless you want to loan me your plane.
All right. So, Thursday doesn't work very well, or you would have to miss the meeting, which I would prefer not to have happen. So, does Wednesday work for the applicant?
What, sorry, what date is that?
The 11th of May. I can't guarantee that. I have to make sure the room's available.
Well, let's just, can we assume that in this lovely building, there's a room available?
Not a room. I'm going to have it at my office.
There's room, if upstairs is available, clearly, it's big enough.
So, Eleanor, if we don't know the, because we have this room reserved all the time.
Yeah.
I think what the best we can do then is to pick a date. If the room is unavailable, we would have to go through whatever machination is necessary to shift the date. Yes?
Have to notify.
Right, we would notify. I mean, I assume that you can find out if this room is available today, even, or tomorrow.
Is it likely that it could be in this building, though, on that date?
Yeah. It's very likely.
It's in this building, it's not a big deal.
Oh, any room.
But if it's someplace other than this building...
You mean for the notice.
Then there are serious notice issues.
Yeah. But we have time, don't we? What is the notice requirement, a couple of weeks?
Two weeks.
So, we'll be able to determine if this room is available?
I should be able to, yeah. I mean, we could start it early, in the morning. I probably don't need to be...
On a Thursday?
Well, I mean, if I leave at 11:00, I'd make it to Boston by 1:00. My flight's on the way.
I'm easy, I'm here, so...
So, you know, if you could start at 8:30.
It's probably difficult for, yeah?
Yeah, they'd have to come the night before.
All right, well, what's the pleasure? I'm easy. Thursday at 8:30, but we don't know if the room's available Thursday at 8:30.
It's more likely if you're available early in the morning.
What's the pleasure of everyone?
Make it...
My flight's at 8:00.
Oh. Eight at night.
Flight's at 2:00. Lisa, your flight's at 2:00?
2:30.
So, I could shift it to 10:00, that's likely...
No, no, 2:30 out of Boston.
No, I know, I could shift the meeting now, starting at 11:00 AM. Oh, out of Boston.
Yeah, I got to get to Boston. And I haven't booked that connection yet. I mean, it could be that there's a Cape Air flight that gets me down time, but I haven't done that yet.
Okay, well, let's decide. I mean, I would prefer to go to Wednesday, where, but we're uncertain about the room. So, let's assume one of the rooms in this building is available. If it's not, we'll notify everybody. Does Wednesday work for you? Wednesday, the...
11:00.
If we could do the earlier time on Wednesday.
At 8:30?
No, 11:00. No, 11:00. We, no, we had looked at, your agenda had indicated 11:00 on the 12th, so if we do 11:00 on the 11th, I think that would work.
That's fine.
It works for me.
That works for me.
So, Wednesday at 11:00, Wednesday, the 11th, at 11:00 AM.
I'm sorry, Eleanor, I saw that email, but I didn't have my X-ray.
So, we good with that?
And Michael's gone for, you're gone for a while, Michael.
Week.
Yeah, because I'm back the next, I actually am back.
Well, we're there. Wednesday at 11:00, if the room isn't available, we'll determine that quickly and try to make a change. Okay?
It's good with me.
Good?
It's fine with me.
Okay. So, Ed...
One more minor request. It'll facilitate discussion if they put some numbers or letters on each of those buildings. So, you can say it's that area.
Can I, can, have I, I see people leaving. Have I sort of, can I make another comment? Or have I closed off?
Yeah, you closed.
Okay. The other thing that disturbed me, and I don't know how the other board members felt about this, at the site visit, was the manipulation of grade. And I think there's going to have to be a really good explanation for the two back buildings.
Raising the grade.
This is no longer the site. Even the front buildings, Mr. McKinnon, as you described, the first floor was roughly three feet out of the ground. And I didn't see any great need for that. I mean, normally, if you have eight inches of exposed concrete, plus, let's say, 12 inches of...
Floor framing.
A floor framing, you're about a foot, well, 20 inches, by the new map. So, and then in the back two buildings were...
Five feet of floor.
A good six feet. I mean, you basically said, and you're a tall guy, that the first floor was up here. That seemed very odd to me. And I don't see any reason that you need to manipulate the site like that, other than, I guess, to get the garages in.
The garages, correct. Because that also manifests into needing a very long retaining wall along, I believe, this side and the back section of the site, which I think is less than four feet tall, so it doesn't, it's not a structure, but it's still a big, a very long retaining wall.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that issue definitely will need to be addressed.
I think the site sections would be helpful larger.
Yeah, those were very difficult.
Because they're very small, and they don't, you know, it looks like you're filling about a quarter of an inch.
Right.
The scale is a little deceptive, so I think a really good site section is helpful to speak to that.
I think, yeah, the site section that you put up was helpful, if you maybe knew exactly what you were looking at, but it really wasn't very illustrative, so I think that, I mean, because back in here, that one, I believe, is that AA, and I can't even read it.
Well, the dotted line is the existing grade.
Yeah. I mean, that does not give a sense of first floor at six feet out of the ground. And the schematics of each building, each elevation, don't, you know, they're taken separately, and it looks like the ground is level. It's just not a true representation of what you proposed. Now, again, I'm hoping by, by May, maybe there might be some modification to the proposal, but it's your call.
Okay, one more suggestion. They should show the footprints of the two nearest houses on that plan.
Okay.
That's a good point.
All right, well, and is there anything in the back? Like, again, this site, to me, looks, oop, go back, go back. That site, to me, looks to be represented as flat, but these buildings in the back are six feet taller. These windows are six feet higher, at least as I heard it at the site visit. And that seems very odd to me, and I don't see that flying, frankly, so. Did anybody else have any concerns at the site meeting, despite, I mean, other than the balloons that flew away? We did make an effort, but it was a tough day.
It was a tough day. I think even on a non-windy day, balloons are tough.
Yeah. No other concerns from the site visit? I mean, I think the idea of giving away the house is a great one, if you can do it. If not, I don't think it was an architectural wonder, but...
It's not historic, right?
Who knows? I'm getting a little stoned. So, I guess that's it for, does anybody else have any other comments?
Nope.
No, somebody want to make a motion to continue to mail 11th at 11:00 o'clock?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second. Michael made the motion, I mean, Lisa made the motion, Michael seconded. Any further discussion? No, all is in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have a, thank you. I have a procedural question about, so, on a vote like that, do I need to stipulate which five members?
Three, five, regular members.
Okay, well, they're not all here, right?
Right, so they can't live through the week, so I'm getting to me as...
All right. I'm just curious. Next thing I, got it. All right. Why don't we take a brief recess?
Is the air conditioning there?
Usually, my circulation's pretty bad, but it's horrible.
We could scoot you down.
Eleanor, I'm sorry. It's okay. I know it's a pain just to find out when the room's ready. I just, I last been up to go pick up my daughter.
You wouldn't believe how many meetings there are. I mean, there's meetings we've never heard of, you know, like the boards and the other type. And then, I mean, like, you know, nonprofit boards. And then there's the town boards, and commissions and so forth, so it's...
Hopefully, someone that doesn't need a room this size...
I think Wednesday morning should be fine. I would have more trouble relying on the afternoon. I would have more trouble relying on the afternoon or select.
When do we ever close that?
I'm sorry?
Do we close that? Most missing year.
Thank you, sir. All right, Jeffrey, so I'm new to Thomas, and you sit up.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I got some space for you, don't be shy.
I know you, I know who you are.
But thanks for your comments, they were helpful.
Were you watching?
It's not streaming. It's not streaming.
That's why I made a part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one concern.
Well, you know, at this spot right here, you know, when they were, it was staked, actually. You know, you back out here, and you've got cars coming in.
All right, let's get going.
Cars going out, cars coming over here. That's the playground right there.
Um, which one?
And these are all, what they said is they want the labor, so it's gonna be 18, 13, close to 20.
And all that thing is, is one of those things that blows out your back tires.
Which one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's...
Yeah, yeah.
No, it was open, Williamstown?
No, you were supposed to mull in, but you didn't.
All right, we're getting ready, Paul.
That's all right.
We wait for Terry. All right. Okay. Lisa's, Lisa, Eleanor, Lisa did not mull in into these old businesses, right?
Some of them I'm on.
Yeah, yeah, this particular one.
She was here, she doesn't have to mull in if she was...
No, no, I wasn't here for this. I left early last, last one.
That's fine, I have five.
All right, so...
The board was Ed, Michael Amara, Karen, Mark Ward, Jeff.
Okay. So, we open this one, the board is here. So, 516 William J. Stone II, 8 Atlantic Avenue. Mr. Jensen.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's Paul Jensen for the applicant, all right? You guys met last month on that, my co-counsel, Stephen Cohen, was here. He might have said this was gonna be easy, but it's really a conundrum we're in.
Yeah.
Okay? This property was before this board, and it was created by a variance. It was an 81L subdivision, but also they moved the house, or they moved part of the house, or the house was so moldy and icky, it really fell down almost on its own. But they created a house on one lot, and on that lot, they were required by the building code to put stoops that are three feet on each egress door. And I met, at the last meeting, you guys raised some issues with building code. There may be a solution that doesn't involve a decision by you. I'll tell you, if my client had a solution that didn't involve coming back to the board, we would do it, as long as that solution isn't demolishing part of the building, or moving the building, or reconstructing it somehow. To give you a little background, the house that was originally moved was about 1,195 square feet. This house is about just under 1,000 square feet, so they actually shrunk the building. And in the documents, it shows you how they were gonna move it and everything. So, that shows, basically, it was gonna move, they thought they could put steps on it, like the old house had. When they came to do the final inspection, they said, no, you have to have stoops, and they have to be three feet, all right?
And you have evidence to that?
I have...
You have a letter from Steve?
I don't have a letter from him, I meant, but I have copies of the building code.
I looked it up myself, it is indeed a fact.
So, even an in-swing door now needs a stoop?
That is correct.
I will, I will just read you...
Why didn't you take that into account when you applied for the moving? I mean, the plan...
I, I don't know who the architect was, but I know that my clients got rid of the builder. The house actually shrunk, it got smaller, and it was all right there. But just a second before, can I finish?
No.
I wanna just finish, I'm sorry, sir.
Sorry, it's been a long day.
Other than the building code, and we can talk to Steve Butler, and he would say, we gotta have what we have, all right? We were talking about just the siding of the building. The way this lot is designed, you can't cite this building, which is actually a little smaller, in any other fashion and meet the setbacks, okay? It was thought it was gonna be met by a step. The idea that, let me see here, you know, this property, as I said, is a cleanup. This thing was falling down, they cleaned up the property. The neighborhood likes that it's cleaned up. It, we want, one of the solutions was, we thought we would grade. I think you have a memo from me on grading. I'm not quite correct in the one and a half inch to threshold, you can be within seven and a half inches on the outside. But to create a platform that's three by three, and then go to the street, and if you look at the picture, which I gave you, there's a tree and a root right on the street, there's about a five-foot sidewalk. I measured this today, it's 13.5 feet to the street, the curb, but it's only about, according to the plan, about a little under six feet to the property line. So, you've got, you've got six feet to raise up maybe 10 or 15 inches, no other properties like that. Then you've got the issues, you can't control the sides of a grading, so it would be over the shingles on the side, you'd have some rot again, there'd be issues of, so I don't think grading is a solution here. If we could grade, we would've. There's an issue too on the back, we could maybe solve it if we changed the lot line, right? We both own properties, but guess what we need to do to change the lot line? A variance, because that's how they were created. So, we'd have to go through and make a variance, and it seems to me a better solution is, grant us the variance for the intrusions, but, you know. Also, in the, I handed you out pictures of houses, I looked through 12 houses, starting at the corner. Seven of those houses are closer to the street than this house is. I mean, the R1, 10-foot setback, doesn't really fit this part of the neighborhood. There are houses that meet it, five of them do, and if you go farther down the street, yes, some of them do. But this house would be, this stoop is actually farther away from the street, and this is all measured from the street, and I know it's not the property line, than seven of those houses. I mean, it fits right in the neighborhood. So, I ask that, you know, you grant us this variance, it will only be for the stoop. It's really a modification of the earlier variance you did. There's plenty of detriment, financial or otherwise, if we don't, we have to basically demolish the house, because we can't fit it, cut it off. And so, that's, that's my presentation.
I apologize for interrupting you, sir.
I'm sorry.
I had not, my larabar had not metabolized yet.
No problem.
Okay, so, Mark, you looked this up, and it's not the fact that the building code requires it, it's the fact that you applied, you, being the owner, applied not showing the stoop, could have moved the building out of the setback very easily with the stoop when they moved it, and basically, applied with crummy information, and now want us to bless the crummy information that was applied for, and that, that's frustrating, is all I'm saying. I don't, well, you know, I just...
Mr. Chairman, if you recall, the permit card was actually signed off on the back for a final signature.
Exactly.
And so, we're saying, if that's the case, there was, I went and looked at the file.
Yes.
I looked at the permit card, there was no stipulation to put a stoop on the front of it, it was signed off at a final.
So, why are we here?
So, what are we doing?
Were the stoops put on after the final inspection?
They were not. What happens, as, if you know the building department, they have a certain amount of time to pull back approvals. I think it's seven years on a permit, if they find that there's a problem. According to my client, during the final inspection, they said, you gotta put stoops on here, you need stoops. You show me a picture of you putting the stoops on, and I will sign the card, okay? And so, they did that, and then it goes to Marcus, the zoning enforcement, and he sees with the as-built, that these stoops are in the setback. This was no, my client actually owns a house down the street. He's not, he's not trying to pull a fast one or anything. He depended on his architect and his builder to build it right, to tell him that this fit zoning. All the plans they showed you, they showed everybody, showed a step into this property. Because that's what had existed on the old house, a step, which was built prior to any building code stoop requirement.
Mark, just out of curiosity, in your reading of the building code, this permit was issued in 2012, would that have been the present code?
It was a requirement. You have to have a landing now, step outside of any door that's considered a means of egress.
Go ahead.
Oh, can I see? There's not a means of egress.
Oh, you're not sitting on this.
Well, there are only two doors, so it has to be a means of egress.
And it doesn't matter whether it's, it's, it's concrete, stone, or wood?
Not, not, not according to Marcus Silverstein anymore.
Okay.
That's gone away since, I think, 1995 or something like that.
Seems to come back once in a while.
It does, it does.
Didn't we have a copy of the signed-off building card at one point?
It's in the step report.
It's in the sta, all right, I'm looking at the wrong thing then. Usually, I'm not saying this is always the case, if indeed they're going to accept the picture, there's a notation on the card.
Yeah.
Saying, you know, build steps.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm not there, this is what I was told. But even if you're questioning whether they did it after or before, we're still stuck with a building that we can't get a CO on, without relief from this board.
Because, so it's not the building department, it is Marcus who said, again, I don't really, I'm not sure I understand.
I believe there was a citation after the fact, when Marcus reviewed the plot plan and came, came up with the non-compliance of the front stoop.
I see, you know, so in other words, you could have built those front steps, and the side one too, which is in the setback.
Correct.
In error, but the building department would not pick up on that, it would be Marcus, of course.
Yes.
Right. Well, how does everyone feel?
If, can I add just, I mean, the whole play, the whole thing is a variance to begin with. We're just modifying the variance, that's all we're doing, to allow these intrusions.
It's the principle of asking for something, getting a variance, and you could have done all, not you, but the applicant could have done all of this, if he had simply, you know, one, asked for the right thing, and two, done what he said he was gonna do. You know, these would be the stoop, but it is another issue, but, so, I mean, from a practical standpoint, many of the houses in the area do have stoops closer to the road, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Mr. Chairman, are you gonna make a motion?
No.
I can't.
I'm not. Are you?
I'd rather somebody else do it.
I mean, the side stoop could be rectified by modifying the, you know, again, whether or not we wanna go to this extent, by modifying the lot line. He owns both properties.
You'd have to, Mr. Chairman, you'd have to grant a variance for us to do that, too.
I'm not, I, we had to do that anyway, basically. I'm not advocating, I'm simply bringing it up. Do I feel strongly enough about the stoop? I don't know. How does everyone else feel? Mark?
I, I, I'm not gonna make a motion, because I was, I'm opposed to the 81L that came on this property in the first place, and now we've got another issue in front of us because of it, so I'm not making a motion.
Okay, so that's three no motions. So, who else had? Karen and Jeff. Anybody got anything to say?
Well, what are the options here, ultimately?
Well, the option is to say no, and here, God knows what you have to do. I suppose you create two other means of egress out the backside of the building that are legal.
Which would cost...
Well, HDC, we have to have a front door.
It doesn't have to be operable. Screwed shut.
My office.
Yeah.
They would still, they would still, well, maybe, you might be right, they may not. If you don't, can't use it...
It's not a means of egress, you don't need a stoop. So, there is an alternative, is, are there other doors?
There are no other doors. And I don't know, I don't know the interior of this, to see if that would be in the middle of the kitchen counter, or in a bedroom.
What is that thing off the backside? Those aren't steps?
It's a shower and a patio. I was there today, so I know what the outback is. There's a patio and a shower.
Anyway, I don't wanna spend too much time on this.
Right. Well, just like any other of the cases, I don't like setting bad precedents, especially for this neighborhood, given that it's so tight. However, it's also one of those issues that have come before the board, where it probably will cost the applicant a fair amount of money, so there'll be some loss there. And it's more substantial than, you know, fixing just a small area, which is a stoop, so. Given the information that we have here, I'm not, I'm not too happy about it. I kind of agree with Mark's points, this is 81L that seems to have gotten out of hand. So, if there's some way that we can make reference to those points that I've mentioned and put it into a decision, I make the motion to do the variance as requested.
Okay, I'm gonna, that's fine. I'm assuming the stoop as-built, all, both stoops are at the bare minimum.
They are.
Anyway, so the motion's been made. Does somebody want to second that? Jeffrey seconds it, okay. Any further discussion?
Could you please repeat the motion? I'm sorry, you didn't.
Well, that was a motion, right?
Yes, it was.
To grant the relief as requested, with just notations in the, in the decision that, I don't know, what were the notations?
Well, the relief was requested by either special permit or variance. You're requesting a variance modification relief?
Yeah, and one of, one of the, I just don't want this to make a bad precedent for everybody else to come in on, that's all I'm saying. And I know variance...
So, are you, would you prefer, I mean, the special permit may be easier to swallow than... than the variance? Or we could make the argument that the topography of the lot, or the shape of the lot is always...
Shape of the structures.
Shape of the structures has always been one of my favorites.
Particularly when you form an 81L.
Yeah.
I mean, I think ultimately I'd rather do this on a special permit is what I'm getting at.
Is that okay?
According to 139C2.
Unintentional?
Yeah. For appeals, make grants a special permit to validate unintentional setback intrusions not greater than five feet into a required yard, not closer than four feet from the lot line, provided that it shall first find that the burden of correcting the intrusion substantially outweighs any benefit to an abutter of eliminating the intrusion. And if the intruding structure was so cited after 1990, the sighting of the structure was reasonably based on a license survey.
So we're assuming, well.
There, it's, in your package is a license survey showing where, and we put it exactly where we said we put it.
Yeah, I mean, in their, not in their defense, because this is indefensible. It did show the one step.
Yes.
Coming out, it just didn't meet the building code.
Yeah.
And we are talking about two intrusions here.
We are.
Not just the front.
May I make a comment?
Yeah.
I think a variance would be less, how would I say it? Open up a door. If you do this by special permit and people do the same thing, they could do, moving houses and then putting stoops on them, special permit happens. Variance is very specific to this lot. You already created these, this property by variance because it was before we changed our zoning code and made 81Ls meet zoning. So it's pretty unique in that respect. I don't know how many variances you granted for these kind of subdivisions before we did that.
I think the 81L is kind of throwing a loop into this. Would your client be open to changing out that, that side stoop?
We'd have to move the lot line if you want to make that part of the variance to change the lot line to do that. That would be a cost to my client, of course. It'd be some surveying and a plan, but it can...
Do we need a, an application on the next lot?
No, I think what you would say on the next lot is that we just have to meet it. I mean, my client will have to meet it. I can't imagine if you grant this that I want to be standing here on the next lot for a stoop in the setback.
But aren't we doing something that affects?
He hasn't built anything on the, on the lot.
It's still the old dilapidated garage you serve, isn't it?
Yeah, and we can, we can do a lot line that stays the same size.
So we're changing the, the shape of it?
If we, if we reconfigure the lot line?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it affects two properties, not one?
Right.
But he owns both of them.
No, I understand, but there's no application in front of us for the next one.
No, I didn't make it...
Well, he would have to reapply for that one to change the lot line. And we'd have to grant the variance for that, for the, for the rear stoop.
I agree. I'm just wondering whether, if I, I'd want to make sure that I could get both of them at the same time before I...
Well, if we determine that we want them to change the lot line, yeah.
Yeah.
Or we can just say, you know, we'll modify the special perm, I mean, the variance for what's here, what's drawn and...
Now, you could do special permit, like she said, it's, I can go within four feet of the lot line on that one. And then the back is fine.
I'm okay with moving on instead of coming back in several months for a six-inch lot line move. I mean, I, I'm taking Attorney Jensen at his word that the stoops are at the minimum and they can't be reduced in size, like the one on the side for six inches? I don't know that for a fact, but...
Yeah, well, the code says three feet in the direction of travel. And I'm sure that it has to be a certain width and everything.
Has to be as wide as the door.
Wide as the door.
Well, I bet the one on the side is bigger than it needs to be.
Very likely.
It's probably as big as the door, the casing of the door.
Well, you didn't take a picture of that one. But again, I'm not really that worried about the six inches and I like the...
Keep things moving?
Yeah. Lisa's got places to go.
Do you have anything better to do?
Okay, let's move on. What, so the motion is, I, Karam, are you modifying your motion to grant modification of the variance versus a new special permit? Because the variance may be less of a problem for us later on.
Modification variance.
Isn't that one of the options?
Yes.
Yeah. Option two.
To validate the sighting of the block.
Yeah. I'm okay with that. Well, so Jeff, you second that? All right, so just because we're in a sort of a two, three, four, five, yes, so Jim, you're not voting on this. You're voting, Mark?
Am I?
Yes, you are.
You were on it from the beginning.
You can't squeak out last minute.
Yeah, that's what Lisa wanted to do. Can I abstain? Anyway, any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye aye.
Aye.
Okay. So you're good.
No, I didn't catch the vote. I'm sorry.
Is Lisa sitting?
No.
No, okay.
I believe it was unanimous.
This is really confusing.
Yeah, this is always going to be confusing.
All right, now, let's move on because someone, someone needs to go. 616, 16, oh, now this is the one I have to call John Brescher?
Yes, but Steve is here as well. Yes, please call John Brescher.
I don't know. This is yet another...
This one is...
Eleanor, were you, what, how do I get on this, this phone to work?
Ed, Lisa, Michael, Karam, Jen.
This is Broadway?
Yes. Come on dial.
Sure.
Ed, Lisa, Michael, Karam.
We have to dial one first. Where's John? Down the floor.
Yes.
That was horrible. When I interrupted, that was bad.
You've got to pick up.
Hello, this is John.
Hey, John, it's Ed.
Ed, how are you?
I'm well. You?
I'm well, thank you very much.
Are you in the sun?
I'm just getting out right now.
And I'm wearing my down jacket in the ZBAA hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's windy too.
All right, we're going to move on after the weather report. Let's, 1620 Capital LLC, 25 Broadway for the applicant. This is new to us.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the zoning board. John, Attorney John Brescher representing 2320 Capital, owner and owner of 25 Broadway and Scotsett Mast. I submitted a letter to the Order of Appeals last, for last meeting in March addressing the concerns that the board had, specifically relative to how the project is different from the relief granted to the project over at One Kite Hill Lane. I want to follow with the, with the details of the letter by Steve Goan of SJC Engineering, who was the engineer of the project at One Kite Hill Lane and also the project for 25 Broadway. It's going to take a detailed summary. And we received some input from Burick and Tuscana as well. The Order of Appeals also asked that the construction moratorium between June 15th and September 15th be added and actually finally by client. With the issue of parking, in the event that there is any interior construction during the summer, obviously workers will encourage you as a public transportation force carpool. This way that will reduce the number of construction vehicles along Broadway. During the off-peak months, the construction vehicles will use public parking spaces along Broadway. I took a drive over to the site back in February and I think there was only one car on the street. Granted, that was February, but still there were plenty of parking spaces available for contractors to use during the off-season, which is when the majority of the work will be done. And of course, the general contractor will provide the proper contact information to the building office and will notify the abutters of any destruction of utilities or any road closures as may be necessary as part of this project. And let's see, the construction team is also going to have a meeting with Sylvia, Bob Gardner of One Comis, and, you know, most members of our team to make sure that all the sewer and water lines are protected. There is, there still is no geotechnical report, although the latest on that is that the boring work was done last week and we contacted the abutters, the most, the immediate abutters as well as all those abutters who wrote letters in regards to investigations that they would be put on notice of this boring work being done. I believe Steve Theroz in the audience may be able to give a more detailed report for our findings of what, what came of that. And finally, the Order of Appeals asked about the bylaw, the noise bylaw, relative to hours of operation. Looking through the noise bylaw, it supposedly prohibits any excessive loud or unusual noise between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. This is up to 7:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. between June 15th and September 15th. And this is a bylaw that's enforced by the police department. It's also modified that the, no exterior power tools can come in before 10:00 a.m. on Sunday before June 15th or September 15th. And because that's the name of the construction moratorium, that's what we'd like to be held to with respect to any, any hours of operation for the construction. Obviously, the more the crews can work on the job, the quicker it can be done and the pieces of the neighborhood can be restored. Again, just in estimation, what we have here is special permit requests that they are looking to, with buildings, put in a foundation, put in a basement, full foundation and the building back down in the backseat location with the height being, I believe, is one foot higher. And that's, and as I said, if we, Steve Theroz in the audience, can answer any of the questions relative to the construction process or methodology that may be used.
Okay, thanks, John. Do, do we have questions for Steve at this point? Or John?
Yes, I have. I have one. Two questions. One is, I went out there last night and looked at the house and there's no question that it's in jeopardy of losing its vitality. The back section of the house against Front Street looks to me like it's at least 18 inches below grade, the shingle line. So is, is, if you only raise that up a foot, you're still going to have a shingle, of course, presumably, below grade.
That is true, Black. But we'll do the same, similar item with the drainage system that's better than what's there now. Our objective is just to not raise this house too far out of the road. We thought a foot was enough for us to come up in the front so that we can balance out the front first floor with that of the existing road that's there. Rented the road from built up over the years. And yes, there'll be a drainage system that'll be put around the foundation and the waterway as fast as they can.
Okay. And I assume that that's going to be, not going to affect your setback?
No.
Because it's going to be landscaping, basically, is it?
It's not going to affect the setback.
Okay. Number two, I understand that Front Street's going to be shut down for up to a month and a half, some section of it, not all of it.
Correct.
And what provisions are there for, I know the closest neighbor looks to me like they're older than I am. What provision is there for anyone who's in residence at that time to call somebody working on the job for help carrying groceries down the road or whatever might need, whatever help they might need?
We'll make provisions with the general contractor or whoever's selected to assist the neighbors in any way, while the street is closed. We have already gone through lengths, as John had mentioned, to notify the neighbors of any upcoming events and closings. The neighbors will notify as we have promised for the test samples that were done by our geotechnical engineer, McCott, accompanying the preliminary analysis on those test polls where the soil conditions were good and the water table was not going to be a factor. Although the final written soil logs and samples tests will all be available to the end of April. We've been working with Sarah to let the abutters are properly notified. During the course of construction, we are looking to have a blog in place that will update the neighbors and the abutters in the area as to what's going on at the construction site and other various closings, delays, et cetera.
So the neighbors will have a phone number they can call?
Yes.
To talk to somebody who's, who's got some...
And direct access to the blog as well, so they can see the construction. It'll be updated on a regular basis.
Okay.
We, our owner knows that the neighbors are a very important part of this program.
What's a blog?
A website that posts information that you know that.
And we wonder why these meetings last so long.
Okay. So you're good with your concern? I mean, it...
I mean, it needs to be lifted. And there's, there's, I think there's 12 feet on two sides and 15 on another.
The first floor, Michael, the first floor deck is completely shut.
Yeah.
So when the house is raised, we're going to be raising the house using a needle beam, running LBLs along the second floor and raising it that way, cutting off the existing first floor that's rotted, putting a new deck down, setting a house back on the top of the deck.
Do you, I, I've, I mean, I'm just thinking, you're asking for 12 inches. I would probably...
12 inches right now is what the HDC granted us.
Okay.
They didn't want to see the building get any taller.
Okay. So I'd be willing to go to 13.
We have to do it in a mud block condition as well.
Put it in the block.
What I'm doing to allow us to not have to deal with the situation as much as you think it actually had to.
All right, I have a concern about the timeframe. Scotsett remains fairly busy into the fall and I would like to see October 1 versus September 15th for the start of heavy equipment and...
Does that give them enough time so the project is done the following Memorial Day?
Certainly the exterior if they don't happen to finish the interior that's on them. I mean, I don't, it's a tiny building and I would think...
Well, as small a building it is, it's still complicated.
No, I understand. The beginning is complicated, but it's also complicated by virtue of the fact there's still a lot of people out there in, in September and to close the road, I don't know, if no one else cares, it's fine.
I'd rather be bothered in the fall than in the spring or early summer myself, but...
Really? Because I don't think anybody's in, nobody's there in the spring. Nobody in their right mind is on Nantucket in the spring. There is no spring. Whereas the fall is beautiful. There are people in there, probably those houses, many of them are rented and I think it's a lot more problematic.
Yeah, you would know.
The residents, because it's much busier there in September, October.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
No one's there in June. I mean, there's nothing open. I saw some poor people out there the other day on their bikes. Where can we get something to eat?
Mr. Chairman, if you're going to push it back, you should, you should as well.
Well, that's exterior construction. If you can't get the exterior construction done in that period of time, I think there's, there are issues. So I would say no. No. It was a good try though. Sarah, do you want to talk about this?
I do. I should probably go to a mic.
Yes, you should. Steve should have gone to a mic, but I'm getting tired.
Yes, Sarah Alger represent a number of abutters, including the Hollands and the Daisies. I will say that Steve and John have been very responsive and they have been keeping us up to date and sending us notices and we appreciate that. One, a couple of things that I'm concerned about. I agree with you that Scotsett is busy through the fall. There are people who live in their houses, particularly right in this area, until, into October. So an October 1 start date is certainly better than September. Two, I don't see on this plan, first of all, I don't see any exterior steps on this Two, I don't see on this plan, first of all, I don't see any exterior steps on this plan, so if you're going to go up, you may be creating a step problem, and maybe that's part of the issue.
Just come back in a few months.
Yeah, that doesn't seem to be a problem. I also don't see any air conditioning units, and I've been asking about whether or not this project was going to go geothermal, and I don't know that they know that yet. But I am concerned about placement of exterior air conditioning units. There aren't any now, and there's very little room on the site plan for there to be any. So we're obviously concerned about that placement, noise, et cetera, and would urge them, if not ask that they be required to do geothermal. Part of what's driving the issue with this project is the construction of a full basement. It's really not 100% necessary that they put a full basement on this structure. It's the digging down that's going to create all the havoc, both with the four surrounding streets, but also the abutting properties. Without going down for a full basement, we wouldn't have quite as many of the concerns about road safety, utilities, et cetera, collapse, all of that, as if, that we wouldn't have as much of that if there was just going to be, say, a crawl space, put this on something that isn't a full basement. The other part is the concern about the full basement itself and what it's going to be used for. It's currently not, none of the rooms are labeled on the plan, so I don't know that they're being tied to any particular number of bedrooms. I'm not sure how many bedrooms are in there now, because none of those rooms even are shown existing as having furniture in them. So if there was a way to get a bedroom count and limit the number of occupants, because if you're, if you're adding bedrooms or rooms that could mysteriously and magically become bedrooms after the fact, it really is intensifying the nature of this structure in an area that's already extremely congested. And I think we're seeing all over the island the proliferation of these livable basements with walkouts like this one has, being used as bedrooms. This is already a duplex, so if you're adding bedrooms to it, it's only going to increase the parking and congestion, and I think that is a substantial detriment to the neighborhood beyond what's now existing and may not fall within the purview of the second, of the special permit. I think the construction issues, you know, it's going to be ugly, and I think there's no question about that, but the building does need to be picked up. It does need to be fixed, and there's, we're not arguing with that, and I think they're going to do a good job with that. But it's more the long-term issues of impact and congestion and bedrooms, I think, that we're focusing on now, and the air conditioning in particular.
Okay, thanks. So I guess...
You can't address Sarah.
What, you can, but you probably should just at least identify yourself. Terry, you can hear, right?
Yeah.
Steve Thoreau, Nantucket Architecture Group. To talk about Sarah's point regarding the foundation system, it's going to be the same whether you dig down four feet or you dig down eight feet. The procedure's still the same. You've got to protect the road. You've got to put some sheet piling in. You've got to protect the neighbors for public safety, as far as that goes. So there's really not much difference involved between going down with the crawl space and then it's going down with the foundation. There were no bedrooms in the basement. There's mechanical spaces in the basement and storage, because there's no space on the site to put mechanicals, as you're well aware of. So in order for us to probably provide the services for this building, the basement is the place where it needs to go. The existing building is and has been a duplex, and it's been existence since, I don't know, I don't want to put a guess on a date, but the number of rooms, or the number of rooms shown on the drawings, as far as bedrooms are concerned and goes, and, you know, there's, there's no, no plan to increase the intensity of bedrooms in that basement area.
Are you doing an eight-foot dig?
Yeah, we're going to do a nine-foot dig to get an eight-foot pour. Do we have footing? Yeah.
Standard.
Standard basement, right. You know, we're not going down 10, 12 feet. That's not the intent here, because I don't have the space, Lisa, for my staircase to get up to the first floor. I don't have that. I'm lucky of having a large amount of run.
Well, and I see there's no woodwork wall, so you wouldn't ever have any legal bedroom space.
No, exactly. You know, we don't have to provide egress, because there's no bed, no bedrooms.
But the HGC is a good question. I mean, I know the HGC will have a lot to say about where you put your AC units, but they cannot be in any of the setbacks.
We wanted to wait to the soil report and where the water table was before we explore any type of geothermal. Geothermal is a way that we're looking to go here. Also, too, it's a cost savings to my client in the long run through some energy consumption kickbacks or credits from the, from the state. If in the event we go conventional, you know, the condenses will be located on the plan and go back before the HGC.
And outside of a setback?
Yeah, of course, yes.
And then what about the step issue? You must have at least one step, well, one's under the overhang. What about the other means of egress?
Well, the elevations show the steps.
The plan doesn't show.
The plan does.
So I just want to make sure that if there was a step off that door closest to Marion Street, well, actually, I'm not sure what I'm looking at.
It's on Broadway. The, the step issue would be the, the Broadway step.
I'm looking at maybe in a site plan that's not appropriate. I don't know.
All right, we keep going backwards to page 28, I think.
Oh, I see.
Well, you're right, there are no steps shown.
Is there a mud block?
Yes, Michael.
Okay. So that takes up eight inches.
There's one ledge here.
So this four inch from grade into the house, is that correct?
Pretty much so.
Okay.
Yeah.
There.
That's right.
Is the door down?
There is. But that shows an overhang. So if you could, we should just make sure the steps, because it does, on your floor plan, you show landing outside of the door closest to Marion Street. And that would, is that your zero setback? That one, that wouldn't be an issue?
I'm sorry, Lisa. One more time.
There's a door by Marion Street, I think is what it's called, Marion Street, that is showing a stoop on the floor plan, but not on the site plan. This door right here. So I just want to make sure that it shows up on a site plan that we're going to, that we're going to bless to have the appropriate stoop size.
I think that's not, I think that is not really a stoop. I think it's just an area on the drawing, because we're going to step right down to the grade, right down to the grade. With an eight-inch mud block, we're only going to be, you know, maybe a six-inch drop set.
So that could be a piece of loose stone on the grade, or something like that.
Right. So your finished floor is six inches above grade?
Pretty much, I guess.
Well, that's not what shows on, I, I don't, I don't really care, but it's not what shows on, I can't pull this up very well, but that elevation is showing steps. That does it different door, but the floor plan shows...
That's the existing door that's there.
This is, no, I know that, because the step, it says proposed west elevation.
But it's showing a step.
That's underneath the overhang. That doesn't matter.
Sorry.
But it looks like you're about a foot above the grade for your finished floor.
This is not correct right there. This, this would be correct right there, this one right here.
Yeah, but that's two steps, so there is a step.
Definitely a step.
This is a step down to the first step.
Yeah. But if the step doesn't show on the site plan, it doesn't show the step.
The site plan doesn't show it. That's all we're saying.
There's no steps here, so you need to make sure that...
It will show step, yes.
So it looks like your floor is actually more like a foot out of the ground.
Well, it's got to be an eight-inch mud block plus six inches above it. It's, yeah, roughly six inches above it, twelve inches.
Your plate right up.
Yeah, currently, the floor is below grade.
Yeah, well, but, but if you're up a foot, you're going to need a step.
Well, it's, it's eight inches for the mud block.
Well, you're going to need a stoop, as it turns out.
Yeah.
Not a step.
A stoop. All I'm saying is you're going to need two six-inch ridges if you're out of the grade.
Well, I'm not so sure a stoop can even fit on this side.
Where's your side? Is this the property line?
Yeah.
Or is that the property line?
Well, that's the property line. So I think you've got to get that rectified.
I will check out the stoop, but again...
Well, we don't want to see you back here as the issue, Steve. It's not that we...
No, I, I don't want to be back here. I don't want to be here in the first place.
That's called mud. So I think the, the drawings need to be accurate.
There should be a survey associated with this.
Yeah, there should be.
Is there a survey?
There is a survey, yes.
But it doesn't show any of the stoops.
Where is the survey?
If you have a survey, you're happy.
Twenty-six. Twenty-six needs to be more illustrative about the actual conditions of the setbacks on some of these stoop step issues.
We will update the site plan to show the step.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
If you don't have a proper site plan, first of all, I don't think you should be granting the relief. But beside that, are these stoops and steps going to be further into the setback than the existing structure? Because if so, then you can't, I don't think you can do it by special permit.
Right.
Because I think 13933A, whatever subsection, says that it can't be more nonconforming than what's existing.
So I think we have a problem, because you can't get out of those doors without a step or stoop, and they don't show on the plan, and they're not there now, so therefore they're, they're going, you're making it more nonconforming, so you've got a problem.
If you step down the grade, one step to grade.
Well, it's not one step. It's 12 inches.
No, it's not.
Well, all I'm saying is that the site plan, the, the HGC drawings look like they
show a foot from, from grade to the finished floor.
The intent was to raise, raise the foot to get above the road.
Exactly.
That was the intent, yes.
So they're going to need a step, an additional step. You can't have a 12-inch rise.
Well, if that's the case, then yes, you do.
So we need to, that has to get resolved.
You may be able to pick where your frontage is and get a zero setback on some side, but I think you need a plan that establishes that.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if the plan that's in this, on page 26, is the proposed condition or the existing condition.
Proposed.
So what's the mortgage block?
No, no, 26 is the mortgage block plan that is...
Yeah, see, we need a...
Yeah, that's existing.
We need a survey, a surveyed plan, not an architectural plan, I think. Don't you think?
Yeah.
To grant relief to? Yeah.
I mean, the, the...
The other issue that we have is to, you know, lower the, lower the foot. I don't have to raise the house. I have an approval to raise the house for a foot from HGC.
I don't think it's an issue, because Broad...
I could just put the mud block up and drop it down and walk right onto the ground. I don't need to raise that house a foot.
Yeah, you could raise it seven and a half inches and add one step.
Correct. I can raise it seven and a half inches, walk right up that door, no steps required, no stoops required, nothing.
I think we still, we still want to have a, a plan that is labeled as a zoning board of appeal survey plan that gets attached to the file from, from our planner.
Well, if I, if I do that, then you don't have the steps, and then the, the plan that's existing, you have.
Uh, but it shouldn't say for mortgage plot plan purposes only.
Okay. I can get that changed for you?
Yeah, that would have to be changed.
I mean, frankly, it's not, as, as Sarah mentioned, you can say Broadway is your front yard, it's then zero, and then the stoop step is not an issue on that side.
On that side, this one was...
Marion may be an issue, depending on how...
Right. You might be able to resolve it, you just have to...
Right. We just want to be blessing what is correct, not something that's mostly correct and presented to us, right? So what do you want, Lisa? A, a different plan or a plan...
Well, don't you think we should have a, a survey of plan that's associated with the obligation, not based in a non-architectural plan?
Well, yeah, I do, but I'm, I'm okay with the mortgage plot plan, which was done in, you know, 2015, but I, I agree, if there are steps, if you're saying, Steve, there are going to be no steps, that's one thing, but if there are steps, we don't want you to come back. So I think you should show them on the plan. We don't, I don't think there's an issue with them.
If I show them on the plan and I don't build them, that's not going to be a problem, correct?
Not for us.
But then the plan that we have, these three Ks, should show the steps.
Yeah.
So either way, he's back next to him.
Or he says, I'm not going to build any steps.
Right, exactly.
That's, that's, but don't, don't come back with the steps. You know, that, that wouldn't work.
I don't need the steps. I'll just use the mud block, step down seven and a half inches to grade.
Works for me. If that's what you want. All I'm saying is if you want the steps, just draw them and we'll get into your next mark.
Then we just make that prior decision, and that, that building is just going to raise seven and a half inches, not a foot.
It's fine.
Okay. Works for me. Is there, so Sarah, what were your other concerns? I took some notes. Basement, basement.
I would like you to condition this relief on maintaining the same number of bedrooms, whatever those existing bedrooms are.
Well, the drawings show, the drawing, the existing plans are not labeled as the bedrooms.
Correct.
But there is, the first floor apartment doesn't, I mean, the one apartment doesn't have any, you could make the argument it has a bedroom downstairs. I don't know.
Why don't you just go back to assessor's reference?
I want to be clear, we're not arguing that this isn't a duplex. It clearly is a pre-existing, nonconforming duplex. I just want to make sure that it doesn't get more intense than it currently is.
You might, you might want to talk to your, your clients about this to make sure we have the bedroom count correct.
We do.
What is it?
There's one bedroom on the left-hand apartment.
Right.
And there's two on the right-hand apartment, I believe.
Three.
Okay.
I mean, there are three on, you're showing three beds.
Let me see.
Yeah.
One, two, three.
What on the first floor, two on the second? But what existed?
One, two, three.
That's correct. We've got three bed, we have three bedrooms.
Right, but you just said two a second ago, so...
Two on the side, one on the side.
No, no, you have four.
One on the side upstairs and one downstairs on...
Two, two, three, four, right.
But you said...
You just said four.
So we're just trying to get to the...
It's been a while, Ed, since, you know...
I know, I'm just saying.
And what, what exists now? I mean, we can't...
It's hard to tell.
It's hard to tell for the existing condition plans, how many bedrooms are on.
One, two, three.
Hard to tell.
Yeah, that was, it was three, and that room met the bedroom size, because it's larger than seven by seven. So I don't see how this is, you know, how, why should we be held to this when you have approved draws? I mean, it has four bedrooms. It's a duplex. That's not a lot to ask for.
Same owner, correct?
Yeah.
No, all, all I think Sarah's saying is if, if there is, does the assessor's record stipulate as to how many bedrooms?
Oh, yes, they do.
Good. Yes, go ahead, John.
The, the assessor's record indicates that there are five total bedrooms.
Go on.
Then there'll be no more than five bedrooms.
No more than four. The plan shows, shows four.
Well, why can't they go five if they have five?
Because they've shown a plan with four.
Okay.
So that, you know, one doesn't pop up mysteriously in the basement.
Well, Mr. Chairman, it is assessed at five. I mean, you're being assessed at five bedrooms, leaving it five bedrooms. Now you're increasing it to six.
Did you look at the basement plan? There's no windows. Is it door into a common space?
All of a sudden, you go back and get a window wall, and we don't know about it.
On this side?
I'm just saying. No, we're going to condition on no living space in the basement anyway.
Yeah, they could take the wall down and have the stair go into the base, that one, I suppose, but...
I don't care, four or five. If you don't, if everyone else is comfortable with.
I think if they're assessed at five, it should be five.
Five.
And then you can condition.
Okay, let's move on.
Can we ask that they submit those assessor's records with their filing?
Absolutely.
Because those are not in the file.
Before we would approve this, we would, or sign anything, you would have to provide that record to us, John.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, the basement, no living space.
No living space.
At all. The AC units can't be in the setback. If you go geothermal, more power to you, your neighbors will like you. The full basement versus the crawl space, I don't necessarily agree with Steve that it's the same amount of digging, et cetera, four feet or eight feet, but you're allowed to have a basement.
It's nine feet. He said nine feet he's taking.
Well, four would be five, so I was talking the wall height.
I got it.
But I'm okay with the basement.
Yeah.
So what else?
Seven and a half inches of grade, no steps.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
The construction moratorium.
Construction moratorium, October 1st, June 15th.
June 15th to October 1st.
Yeah.
They can't build between June 15th and October.
No.
But you said November 1st and June 15th. Just to clarify.
I'm getting ready to wing a sugar packet at a.
I got it. I'm okay. Where's my snickers?
Did you say through June 15th? June 15th to October 1st.
And that includes hardscaping, correct? Like stone cutting and all that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the number to be provided to the neighbors and assistance during road closures.
And a blog updated every day.
Not every day.
I don't think we should make them do the blog.
Please don't give me the blog address.
You want it in, don't you?
The blog is.
Regularly, I guess, is the question. I mean, who knows what regularly means, but.
Well, generally, in the blog world, it's never, because when you see these blogs, they don't.
Because no one reads them.
No one reads them, so.
Well, when the electricity is cut, the blog isn't going to do them any good anyway.
Right.
And then these other stipulations that John has in his letter, they'll meet with his town engineer. The geotechnical information, I'm not sure we need.
Point of contact, he said that he.
Point of contact. Yeah, and this one I love. I don't even know who says it, but he said it. They're going to encourage, oh, yeah, public transportation and carpooling. Hey, we appreciate your encouragement, John, in that regard. I'm going to go out there and see how many guys are carpooling.
Yeah.
I see a lot of that.
You could put that in the blog.
We would like carpool stats in the blog.
Uber, Uber stats.
Okay? I'm trying. I'm just reading through the thing here. You're not helping. Okay, so that's it. Anybody else?
And you're tying it to that architectural site plan with no steps?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what the applicant asked for.
The Marklater plan, right?
Yeah.
It's a Marklater plan, just labeled mortgage plot plan.
But that's an existing conditions plan, so it's, right?
I got it.
You have to tie it to the architecture.
Not in both, it don't show steps, so.
Right.
I'm good with that.
I mean, I'm just going to say this, like, normally, we will ask somebody to show what the dimension will be to the new corner of the house from the lot line on something like this.
Well, did it, is it moving?
Yeah, it's moving. It's rotating.
No, it's not moving, Lisa.
I didn't think it was moving.
It's going up and down.
I don't know. Why does your plan show a hatch mark in one location and the building in another?
It looks like it moves slightly.
It's not moving.
Okay, then we need a plan that shows that we can use the Marklater plan.
We can't move the house with HCC.
It definitely shows them.
Well, I'm just saying, your site plan shows it rotating.
It definitely does.
Can you tie it to the Marklater plan so it doesn't move and those setbacks all remain the same?
Yeah, they're not.
Where's the children?
Well, you see the hatch.
There's no intention of moving the structure.
See the hatch over this line and then the old line.
Well, why does it should be drawn then?
I think it's bad.
No, it's not bad. It's clear.
No, no, no. It's a bad drawing. It's not.
Look, that's not, that's.
That's Steve's office.
My goodness.
It's totally moved.
It's totally moved.
There's no question about it.
What page are you looking at?
On page 29.
So although on this side, it doesn't, I don't know.
Just tie it to the Marklater plan.
Okay. That's where all the questions are coming out, because it looks like it's moving on the side.
I, I got it.
Okay, done. Let's move on.
So it's not, you're going to condition it upon not moving at all?
Not moving one iota.
Excellent. I don't mind if it goes up. I just don't want it to move front or backside or side to side.
It's going to end up moving an iota or two, but not many more.
Just a few iotes.
I hope those shingles aren't any thicker than the.
Okay, let's move on. Jeff's got places to be. Come on, John.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
To grant the relief with those conditions that we read up.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to repeat.
Eleanor got him. Okay? Is there a second?
Yes.
Michael seconds. Any further discussion? You weren't here to discuss this, I assume.
Next application, yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's move on. Thanks, Stephen. 1016 MHD Partner.
Thank you very much.
Are you on, still on the phone with us?
I sure am.
Wonderful. MHD Partner, 1016 MHD Partners Real Estate LLC, Fort Goose Lane, Cove Lane, pressure, Osgood for the applicant. If you're going to speak, just, just, I go up to a mic. It's, thank you.
This had to do with grades, right?
This had to do with a poorly presented application, yes. Terms of the information on the plan, like there was none.
Relative to the project.
Go ahead, John. Somebody.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, this is the applicant, Dr. John Brecher. What we have before you is a application for variance relief in order to relocate a previously nonconforming structure from 43 Tennessee Avenue to Fort Goose Cove Way. I realize that the information that we gave you the first time was not satisfactory with the board, and so we have provided you with additional information that hopefully answers all of your questions. The issue that we have before us is that my client owns the property over 43 Tennessee Avenue, and it is a pre-existing, nonconforming structure with respect to height. It is approximately 25.5 feet above average mean grade, and once the, and the structure was constructed, the structure ended in the mid-'90s. And in, it was 2009, the village hypo-release district was annexed by the town, which rendered maximum height for all structures, and effectively automatic it to be 25 feet, thus rendering the structure nonconforming. He is moving this structure to a vacant lot over on Fort Goose Cove Way, and as a result of taking the structure up and putting it down, making no alterations to the height of the structure and grade, the structure will continue to be 25.5 feet. We have HCC approval for this, certificate of proof income, certificate of proof, number 65233. We have a certification from Don Bracken, relative to the height of the existing structure on Tennessee Avenue at 25 and a half feet. And we have a survey site plan showing the proposed location of the structure. Also, please be aware that there is a 20-foot view easement in favor of the direct butter to the.
Six.
So, you know, I believe that the idea of the village headover district was to not impact people's views of the sunset. There's 20-foot view easement. I don't think this is going to be impacting them in any way. But anyway, I believe this is all the information that the board was asking for, and I believe my client, the audience, should have any questions.
All right, John, I have a question. And the question last time was, was there any manipulation of grade? And the answer was, I don't know, because we're not providing you any information. Well, it seems to me, if I'm looking at this correctly, and unfortunately, my iPad's not working really well, this house is being put into depression at roughly elevation six. That's existing, but the new grade is 12. So you're bringing the grade up six feet and then putting the house on top of the six feet, which doesn't seem to me to be kosher, quite frankly.
We asked Mr. Bracken about changing, you know, the idea has come up before, because it's only six inches relative to the, to the top of this height. I mean, it's, it's not much, and we asked if this is something that we could, that we could do by simply changing the grade or whatever.
No, you are changing the grade. You're changing the grade six feet. You're bringing the grade up six feet, plus the house. So it's from average mean grade, if I'm looking at this plan correctly, which appears to be, it's in a, it's on eleva, the existing is elevation six, and you're bringing it up to a plateau at 12. That's plus six feet. So.
The grade is marked outside the porch. It's 12 and a half.
Right. But the existing, am I looking at the existing?
You're looking at it correct.
So, you know, I guess this is why we asked for this.
It is.
Oh, the applicant is going to answer.
Fantastic.
Or she's going to try.
I'm going to try, yes. When I bought with the lot there was a, was a deep hole. And so perhaps that's the six foot that you're looking at. The lot is currently, the elevation is about 12. I'm not sure if it's exactly 12, but it's very close to 12.
You mean, in other words, you filled it already?
Yes, yes. All the lots there have been filled, the whole.
When was it filled?
It was filled two, three months ago.
In preparation? I mean, it's.
Well, it's, it was a very deep hole, and so we, we didn't fill the lot to address the issue of building height.
Had it been excavated before?
No.
My understanding is, I had, I didn't own the lot at that time. It had been, there was a tennis court or something. It was fully.
It looks like a burrowing pit almost to me.
It was, I, it was a tennis court. It was, it was way below, below the typical grade.
But it was cut for probably to build it.
Yes, it was cut.
Can you build at six feet?
Can you?
Build a house on Nantucket at six-foot elevation?
Why not?
Yeah, as long as you're not in the floodplain.
Well, that's true.
Not, the whole island's not in the floodplain.
No, I understand.
Yeah, so it should, it should be.
The bottom line is, you know, maybe this is the problem with the bylaw, because I've had some experience with this, is that I don't think the bylaw's intent is you fill the land and then say that's your average mean grade. I know people do it, but I think the idea is average mean grade is from sort of as the glacier left it, and that's where you measure from.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, too.
Have been dug out.
It wasn't dug out. It looks like, you know, if you look off the carpet, there's elevation 12 to his east, I guess that would be.
Mm-hmm.
I guess there's elevation 12 to the west, and then to the south, there seems to be.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I've been out to the site multiple times before. Someone purchased it when it was subdivision, we weren't expecting the planning board. That lot was dug out to accommodate, I believe, three courts. It's surrounded by a fairly high bank, it's even with the pond, the end of the pond. And they're building it up, back up to the natural grade, as far as I can tell. I was out there the other day, and they're doing other.
I think the issue is that still, when you, when you kind of look at the way the zoning bylaw reads, you, you're supposed to take in the natural, the existing grade.
Yeah, you're not supposed to make an arbitrary determination on what grade was at some point in the millennium and say, that's my existing grade, and I, just because I, you know, put all this fill in, that's where I'm starting from. Why wouldn't everybody take, you know, let's say I have a lot that has a little bit of view. Why don't I pile nine feet of dirt on it and get the HCC to okay it? Oh, they've done that, but.
No hard feelings.
No hard feelings, but, you know, they, this is just, you know, again, if we want to buy the argument that they dug this out for the, for the tennis court, which, you know, I can probably live with, but I just think that as a, as a rule, the bylaw, the intent of the bylaw is not fill the hole, then call that grade.
Unfortunately, too, you submitted a plan that has the old grade on it, which isn't a great to have in the file.
Well, are you encouraging the applicant to supply?
No, no, no. I'm just saying, it, it's.
Right, the evidence is right there. You're filling six feet.
I'm saying the evidence is in the file, which is unfortunate.
John, do you have any insight into this?
Insight is which aspect of this?
The only aspect we've been talking about for 10 minutes, that the, filling the grade, filling the hole and calling that existing grade.
I mean, I.
This is why we asked last time, and, oh, the ad information wasn't available to us last time, probably because it's not exactly in your favor, being a senator.
Well, I think if, if we went back to prior to construction of those tennis courts and maybe prior to construction of Tristan's Landing, we'd find a topographic maps that would tell us that this was all at 12 feet or around 12 feet 45 years ago.
I think, I'm sure it does. I think at the point that the way that the bylaw reads is not what it was like 45 years ago. So, I mean, is it the same relief? It just has a different calculation? The building is just taller.
Well, yeah, but I mean, there is this, it was presented as it being six inches above the village overlay height.
Right. But what other buildings out there? What are the other buildings in terms of height? The village overlay district.
Along Goose Cove or in the village height?
No, along Goose Cove.
I'm not sure that there is one other building out there. I believe the rest are buildings.
Well, because the problem with these overlay districts that get started is that they get put on overlay districts for buildings of districts that already have tall buildings sometimes, so.
Exactly.
I don't have any problem with moving this building, which is higher than it's supposed to be, you know.
By six inches.
Because they put this idiotic village overlay thing on. I have no problem with that. I have a problem with filling six feet first and then calling that existing grade.
My recollection of this, I mean, there's a new subdivision there, Goose Cove Way, the circle of Goose Cove Way is basically at what existing grade was out there. And then, and then the front portion of this lot, where the drainage system is, it looks like the septic system is, that's probably where grade was originally before this work. And then, and then at some point in here, started that bank down to the tennis court. So really, what he's doing is he's leveling off a lot, starting.
And if I could just say, if you come across, if you come across from the grade as it is today, and you went across, you would come right to, actually, you would come in well below the neighbor on the east side. That's higher, so you, it's, it's lower than the neighbor on the east side and, you know, relatively comparable, well, certainly comparable to the neighbor on the north side and perhaps somewhat higher than the one behind, but they have the view easement. So I can't speak to that because I'm not an expert at all in this area in the filling, and I, and I, so I won't speak to that. But I will say that it's 25 and a half now, and it will be 25 and a half on the other lot. And, and we're not playing with the grade to correct those six inches. We're coming for a variance on that.
Well, you are, in essence. I mean, you're not asking for 31 and a half, but that is the net difference between where your existing grade was before you filled that hole. Well, you are, in essence. I mean, you're not asking for 31 and a half, but that is the net difference between where your existing grade was before you filled that hole.
Right, or did they?
Well, the hole is pretty big.
I can't speak to that. It's too complicated. I don't, I don't want to speak to that.
Okay. We don't have to parse it anymore.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, I, I totally agree. If you look at the lot to the east, it goes all the way to 18. So I understand that.
Just because, again, it may have been the, the tennis court, but just because you're in a depression and your two neighbors are higher, in my opinion, doesn't, and doesn't mean the bylaw says, "Fill the ravine in and build your house up at that height." That, that I don't think was the intent of the bylaw. So anyway, let's, let's just vote it and move on. Who's, who's sitting on this? So it's the four regular members plus doesn't, Jeffrey?
I'll sit over.
All right. So, does anybody want to discuss it any, any, any longer? No?
I do not, but just as a reference point, is there going to be, going to Michael's point as far as historically seeking that elevation, perhaps pre-tennis court?
Well, we don't know, the pre-tennis, we don't know what that was. I don't know how we determine that.
Well, it would have to be from a historical topography map.
You mean prove that it was, they dug out for the tennis court?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it appears that they, there's no question about it. And you want to get out of the wind, so you go as low as you can go.
That's fine with me. If you can prove that, I would be able to vote yea for it, but right now I don't think I'm going to. So that's up to the applicant. Do you want to, I believe you have some time constraints about moving the house, so unless you're making that a condition of your.
No, I'm not, but I think it's, it's logical.
It may be logical and I, I can see my way to it, but then that information should have been given to us since this thing has been continued for three months. I mean, at least make your case with some evidence is all I'm saying, so. But again, I'm, I'm one vote. I'm, I'm ready to vote my conscience on it, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
As requested. No, no further evidence.
Discussion about the, the filling.
I don't think so. I really don't.
Wonderful.
With the site, the grade at the cul-de-sac is, is what it is. The planning board approved and he's just basically creating a level lot to match the other lots at that end of the cul-de-sac.
Can I ask a question? Will this come, is this setting a precedent for other people with the same condition?
Without question.
Yeah, so see, so I have an issue with that.
Well, let's just think about that for a sec. Now, I've, I've come across a lot of places on Nantucket. I used to pheasant hunt where I see places where people just dug a hole on their property because they needed soil somewhere else. And they keep digging, keep digging. They're not in the business of selling soil, but they just keep digging. And there's a burrowing hole that's created, which to me, the, the final owner of that property should not be penalized for, for the fact that, that somebody 50 years ago took soil out of a, off the property, created a hole, and now they want to build on it and that the hole, because of the topography of the hole, that's where the, the starting place is.
I think just the decision has to be written in such a way that it's very specific to that condition, because I think that, you know, to Ed's point, we have a survey that shows that the lot wasn't, that this area was at elevation 6, and now it's being blessed to go to 12, elevation 12. How do you make that, you have to make distinct from.
And I, I agree. I think we should mention that.
Well, I don't think.
That it was.
What was the HTC approval in terms of the grade changes? It's supposed to be specific to the application.
Did you get an HTC, do we have HTC approval?
Well, it should be there. We do have HTC approval, yes.
60 grade change or zero grade change?
Do we have a copy of that? Doesn't show it on the elevations.
No, it shows a flat lot.
Is there a bit of appropriateness?
Yeah, I'm looking at it. I think it's.
There, there was no issue of, of grade change at the HTC.
So even the hyper six feet of.
Michael, by the way, I agree with your fundamental point, but you should show some evidence through an old topo.
An old topo, yeah.
That Joe Schmo, and I don't think this happens a lot, people start digging up their lot over 50 years.
I, I've saw it out at Sluzek's farm.
Yeah, no, I know you did. Couple places and that's fine.
I'm sure Jeff's seen it.
Then just show a topo that, that states that back in the day, this is what it was and somebody built a tennis court here. But to fill six feet when this is all about height out here, I just, I, I can't agree with it. But.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm happy to put it off until we get some other information. It might not be a bad idea to see some sort of ZVA approval as well, I'm sorry.
HTC?
HTC approval.
I, I, I agree. We start there because they really have jurisdictional control over, you know, over VR height restrictions and grade fillings. Right on the application form, if it, if it says there's no manipulation of grade, there's no manipulation of grade. It's ended discussion. It goes back to the HTC and tells them, "I need to manipulate my grade 60."
Because I personally think this was a depression, you know, sort of this wetland thing. That's another plausible explanation for the depression.
For that little, the little thing that comes in.
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm not saying I'm right, but.
It was all dug out.
All I'm saying is that you should present evidence.
If the, if that was caused by glacier, do we give any credit for that?
Yeah, glacial moraine is okay. You know, again, I'm not saying that I have a, a real fundamental feeling that our bylaw is written well, but you're not supposed to manipulate grade like that.
Without, without taking a penalty.
Yeah, I understand.
Without taking a height penalty. So if you want to manipulate 60.
Keep in mind, you're trying to move a house. Existing structure, you usually give a little bit latitude.
I'm okay.
So does the HTC. I just want to see that COA. I want to see what they said for grade change. If it says zero, then, then he's not, he's not asking us properly for the relief that he wants.
John, it sounds like the board's looking for some justification, so I, I would recommend that you, if you didn't get HTC approval to change the grade, that you get it. And I think that in order to do that, you're going to have to come up with a topographic map, overlay, whatever.
What about sworn testimony from either a previous owner?
Old timer, yeah, old timer.
If we can get old timer testimony sworn.
And I think that this is probably available, because that, that, those tennis courts are probably 45 years old.
Seventies.
Yeah.
So that at the HTC.
Lindsey Perry built those, right?
Yeah, exactly. Lindsey's still around. He's down in Florida somewhere.
Good job.
No, but it did also make sense that, I don't, how many tennis courts have you built? I've only built one.
No, you, you did.
And we went down six feet.
Again, I'm not saying that didn't happen.
Right.
So just do the right thing. Show us evidence of how we got to this point if you want to manipulate the grades six feet.
And that you have approval by the, by the HTC, right Mark?
And I would think they would give it.
Yeah, I do too.
Because it is a very unique depression there. It has no benefit to anyone unless it's a, it's a view easement component.
It's such a, it's such a load of, of horse pooey that you can, some places you can grade and some you can't. I mean, why, even if I have a, a hilltop, why wouldn't I want to grade it up another six feet, nine feet, 10 feet?
10.
You know, improve my view. I mean, that is not the. That's not the intent.
That was not.
No, no, no. It's just, you know, you should have to.
19 feet?
You should have to.
Plus, I think doing so would also help us in the future, so it wouldn't set a bad precedent.
Well, I also think that the, that the figures that are associated with the approval are going to change. Because if we, even if we're okay with the fill, the amount of.
Is there any grade manipulation on that HTC by application or the revenue?
Then we ask certain people to do that. We show that we've just seen a proposed.
No, but the application speaks to it. What's the difference between existing and average finished grade? Right on the application. It says zero.
Well, the unfortunate thing about that, Mark, is that you can lie your pants off and nobody checks.
Understood.
But doesn't it change the figure of the height of the building? That's what I'm saying. The figures would have to be adjusted. Even if we said it's okay, he fills it, he has to, the height of his building will now be calculated differently.
Well, the height of this building would, by your math, with the average, averaging would be 29 feet six inches.
Which is fine. We could still approve it. I'm just saying, I'm not saying that I wouldn't approve it, but I think those figures should be updated in the application to be correct, based on existing topo and proposed.
I wouldn't have any issue.
You know, I've seen this in Wisconsin. A guy out there has, he, he moved a house, then totally regraded the, you know, added, I would say, four feet. He's done nothing to the lot. I'm sure will do nothing, but 10 years from now, that will have become grade, and that is not the intent.
Well, what about the Montmore House?
He didn't raise the house.
Moved down the site.
Well, I don't think they raised grade.
It was exceeded the height limitation.
Yeah, but they didn't raise grade.
The house always did. They just didn't, they didn't properly apply.
They didn't realize.
I don't know. Anyway, let's move on.
I'd say we want to protect your interest in doing this, but we have to protect ours as well and how we.
We, we, we can't set a precedent that we allow people to come in and fill with.
Yeah, we're protecting ourselves if we.
Yeah. Oh, it was all manipulated.
So, which one?
The Montmore House.
John.
Yeah, no doubt.
So just, just to be clear, I mean, it, it does not, it does not appear as though we have four votes without, without calling the board. I'm just getting this sense. I, please correct, please correct me if I'm wrong. Like, if, if that's, if that's the case and the board is looking for additional information, you're effectively looking at what the historical photography was.
Well, the, the art.
Around, around the time the tennis court, so, as well as the, the copy of the actual HTC application for approval?
Yeah, and if you determine, John, I think what Lisa was saying is if you were to determine that, that this was always six feet back in the day and it had nothing to do with the tennis court, then really you're asking for a different height than 25.5.
Either way, you're asking for a different height.
I think so too.
You're, you're asking for a different height whether or not it was existing 45 years ago, and I'm not saying I'm not going to approve that height. I just want that.
Oh, I see what you're saying, because of the grade.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's, it's historically, as today's, as we stand today, he's basically raised six feet. It has to be looked into the calculation of the height of the building.
I agree.
So you should amend your application. It's not, it's not an additional three feet. It's, it's an additional. Yeah, three feet, so 28 and a half.
Half of six.
Yes.
Even, even though all the cert, even though the survey, that, that, the height survey that will be done will show it at 25.5.
From the manipulated grade.
Yeah, the zoning bylaw requires you to take the existing and the proposed grade and height average it, and that's how you get your building height. So the 25.6 is not your building height anymore. It's because it's halfway between what existed and what is proposed at the building corner, four feet off the building corner.
May I ask a question at the risk of probably, I shouldn't ask this, but I'm going to anyway. Is there a timing issue here? If the gray, if the lot was filled in six months, a year ago, two years ago, how, how does the timing work? I mean, I know I'm parsing the bylaw and I don't know it and I'm not an attorney, but what, what's, there's, there's got to be a timing issue.
The intent of the bylaw is not to have anybody fill their lot flat or raise it and then come in two months later and ask to build.
A year later, you know, you know.
Okay, I, I don't know. That's why I asked the question.
We don't know.
We don't know, but that's certainly the intent.
Yeah, we had one case this year, which the applicant filled in, I think quite a bit, and I think he ended up withdrawing the case.
Yeah.
But it was rather contentious, so we're trying to avoid that for future reference.
You got.
We got everything you wanted.
Yeah, you got what he wanted.
Yeah.
I'm not saying you can't get what you want, but it's not kosher, in my opinion, and it's not what you asked for.
Let me ask you this. I understand that we require sometimes and frequently the HTC approval, but are we the ones that, we don't enforce what was approved by the HTC? So I would say that for my money, if the applicant can show Eleanor a topographic map from 45 years ago, before anything was built on that property, that coincides with what he's told us, that I'm good to go.
And with sworn testimony.
Yeah, if, if we voted today contingent upon that approval, that, that, that he brings in some evidence that the grade, the grade was considerably different 45 or 50 years ago, I'm fine with that and I think we should vote today.
Go ahead and make a motion and if you want.
Anyone interested in that? No, okay.
Mark, you're.
You're not going to get a vote today that's favorable, so.
Mark's not, we, we picked the voting board.
Jeff.
So it's the four and Jeff, because we were close, so I, I made that call.
Yeah, so you're not going to get the vote.
Well, that.
We don't want more information.
Who's opposed? Lisa, Ned? Or Paul?
I'm not saying.
We haven't voted. He was just taking a poll. Right, we're vote, we're polling. We're polling.
So we're basically, possibly, maybe John wants to take into consideration what Michael's brought up as far as either an old timers' reference or a topograph, uh, topography from dating pre-tennis courts. And then roll with that, see if he can pull that out, and then I think if it's continued to the following meeting, I believe more of the members would be willing to vote in the positive.
Ned, update the application to the correct height calculation. I'd have to re-advertise.
Right.
You'd have to what?
Re-advertise.
Yeah, I don't want to, sorry, yes. If you want to make a motion, Michael, to bait, you know, to vote it.
Well, if I, if I make the motion, it doesn't.
That doesn't satisfy your proposal.
Yeah, it doesn't get approved, then I suppose we could make another motion. It's kind of hard to continue the application after we turned it down. So I'm going to make a motion to continue for more information.
And I will second that motion.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Hey, John, just so you know, next month, oh, I guess you were, we're going to be meeting on Wednesday, hopefully.
Wednesday, the 11th. Eleanor knows. See you, John. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's been continued, so just sit tight. Other business.
You know.
I feel bad about that, but.
We're off the record.
I do.
No, it's still recording.
That, that application lacked any clarity. Okay, other business. Discussion on time when established the board members with view in kind of unzoning administrative decisions issued pursuant to section 139, 2096. At the August 13th meeting, I don't even know where this is, the board discussed protocol and determined 48 hours to be sufficient, blah, blah, blah. Now the board may want to extend or revise that penalty. There's definitely been a, a lack of speed, if you will, on, on signing some of these ZA decisions. Because I see all the emails. Maybe you do, maybe you don't. So I think 78 hours.
72.
72, I'd like 78, would be better. I will say, I think we have to be very careful with the ZA things, because I mean, that, that thing on Broadway almost probably could have been a ZA thing. This whole step thing and moving, again, are they going to get the relief? Yes, but, so I, I, I'm just going to reiterate. I think we should be very circumspect in terms of giving, because I don't, we don't see it until after. But having said that, if Eleanor sees, sees fit.
You do see it before the fact. You have to approve it.
No, we know that, which is basically acting.
No, no, nothing's filed until I hear back from.
I know that, Eleanor, but I mean, it's been done and, and I'm not criticizing Eleanor. I don't.
No, it's not been done. It's not done until it's filed.
I know that, but let's call a spade a spade. Some members don't even read it, so I'm coming and signing it without reading it and some don't come in to sign it period, so it's not being reviewed.
You're talking about ZA. You guys don't sign those. I sign.
No, we don't sign them.
I sign ZA.
You send it out for review.
Correct. There's no signature.
Some, some members read them, and I'm not saying anything about anyone, and some don't read them at all. So I'm just saying I don't think the review process is maybe quite as stringent as in some cases it should have.
I would say it's worked quite well. You caught something recently that others didn't.
I'm not saying I'm probably, you know, I, I read them, but, you know.
Oh, look at you tooting your own horn.
Not, not at all, believe me. I wish somebody else would do a little bit more of the work.
That's why you're chair.
Yeah, well, that's, that's too much.
Term limits?
Absolutely. So, anyway, the, the first question is, can everybody make a better effort?
Wasn't it the understanding that if we read it and we didn't reply, that we were done with it?
That's, that's what I thought.
I think, I think that's what we're getting at here.
Yeah, I think a more proactive, I read it, it looks good.
Yeah.
Would make Eleanor feel better.
It was. We made the change not to bother her with all this minutia. If we felt it was okay, we just didn't respond within that timeframe. We knew what the timeframe was and we opted not to respond because we felt it was inappropriate, ZA decision. That's how it was. So if we want to do it differently, I'm all for that.
Actually, no, I hear a little thing saying that Eleanor wants to know if I've read the email.
That's just the email, but it doesn't mean you've necessarily read the attachment.
That is true.
Okay, moving on.
So we've established 72 hours?
Yeah.
Could we also please, while we're on this topic, establish that if you're going to be away, as in Chairman was recently, without access to internet or consistent access, you let me know that I don't.
I have access. I'm just not reading my email when I'm on vacation.
The point, the point is so that I don't.
All the time. The entire time I had my phone on the bike.
The point is.
I don't check my email while I'm on vacation.
I don't expect you to, but if you could just let me know that you, or if you have one of those reply.
I don't even let my office.
The auto replies.
Okay, I would like to go back to this point.
I will put an auto reply on my email.
Just so I know, I'm not like hanging, waiting.
I don't know how.
Well.
Anyway, we're going to try to do better in terms of. I, I will say, Eleanor, I do not think it's fair to, for you to promise the applicant it's going to be signed in a certain period of time and then get, and then there's agitation if you're not meeting your promise. So I'm simply saying, please be very circumspect, again, in terms of promising when. All you can say is as soon as everybody gets back to it. Don't anybody do the 48, 78.
Does it have to be everybody? There's another question that I posited in here. Does it have to be?
Let's try to improve the participation.
Well, you need four votes, four signatures.
Not on a ZA decision.
Oh, oh, okay. We talked to ZA. I was talking decisions.
No, those are getting signed, only which really probably began without reading. The flunk. Let's move on. Just, just don't overpromise people, you know. They're, I know you want to be helpful, but sometimes it's, I feel like there's this pressure because you, you have said to the applicant, "I can get this done by three o'clock in the afternoon."
I never tell them that.
I'm exaggerating.
I never tell them that. I tell them it's all too.
It speaks to point number two. Discussion of appropriate circumstances under which, which could warrant scheduling of special meetings. This came up because John submitted a poor, poor application with no information, and then wanted to have a special meeting to, to, to discuss it. I mean, that, there are almost no circumstances in mind.
It's one.
Go ahead.
A legitimate reason. The house is getting ready to fall over the, the bed.
That is legitimate.
Do you remember when Don Allen had an emergency? Is that one, were you around here for that?
I was there. I don't remember. I mean, is, and I'm with Michael. There are no emergencies. I mean, the fact that an applicant, you know, I shouldn't be picking on one, any applicant doesn't provide us with a reasonable modicum of evidence of what they're doing is kosher does not cause us a crisis for us. It, it's a crisis for them. Yes, you have the house move off, but this thing's been continued forever.
Oh, has it?
Yeah.
No, it was just open last month. It wasn't really opened, but.
We just had some great, great issues.
Well, I thought it was like three or four months, and we were getting pressured to have the special meetings.
No, no, Broadway was.
No, no, no. This is just last month.
This was just last month, and it wasn't really properly opened, but.
Goose Cove Way?
Yeah, Richard Woodman was here.
My bad. Anyway, so does anybody else want to have special meetings?
No.
No.
Well, quorum issues, when there's a lack of quorum for, you know, unforeseen absences, that, that, I think, is legitimate. It, it's pretty rare, but it has happened.
I think also we're going to be able to circumvent that issue a little bit better by having to resit up here so Lisa goes off to Madrid or somewhere again.
Whoa.
And she's on the.
This is New York.
See that passport?
New York.
You all know that that's not the.
Okay, so this other one was May twelfth, eleven, or we're going to.
No, no, just out of curiosity, if somebody has, is accusing themselves without mentioning why, which you don't have to do to the audience or anyone else, you're just not sitting there. I don't think you should be sitting up there.
Absolutely.
You should get up and just say you're working that.
According to our line, if you have a real conflict, you should leave the room.
Yeah.
So, but if you're sitting up here, you have to be prepared to vote. You can't, you know, say, "Oh, I don't want to go up." All right, the other thing is, there is plenty of time for a campaign. I think we elect new people by June, so just give it some thought, Jeff. I will go into your, to your campaign fund.
I think people would be a good chair. I'm not organized enough.
All right, I think we're good. So can we get a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I'll make that motion.